Move.
Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Blaine. We are now in open session. Good evening. Just a reminder to please make sure your cellphones are silenced. Ms. Shelley, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two moment of silence, moments of silence to begin this evening. Mr. Braswell, would you like to lead us off?
I want to start off by asking us to quieten our hearts for a moment of silence. Please join me in a moment of silence for Cortland High School senior, Michael Collins. He passed away on the 27th of February due to health complications. He's going to be greatly missed and our thoughts are with his family at this time of sorrow. And I can share with them, as you all know, I lost a Cortland High School student personally, and my heart grieves for the Cortland community. So if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
It's with much sadness that I share that Mr. Willie J. Conyers recently passed away. Mr. Willie Conyers served on the school board from 1990 to 1993. He was also served on the, prior to being on the school board, he was an administrator and a coach. Please join me in a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Conyers for his dedication and service to the students and staff of Spotsavany County. Thank you.
That brings us to 7.01. There is no public hearing this evening. Brings us to the consent agenda, the approval of the minutes and approval of donations. Usual and customary, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Mr. Braswell.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Brings us to informational items. Item nine, the Commonwealth Governor's School's school board agenda head start items. Discipline report for January and items for the April 9th board meeting are all included for you to have reference this evening. Brings us to item 10.01, the elementary district choral performance. Mrs. Fennard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This evening, we have lots of recognitions. On February 24th, approximately 245 students from 22 elementary schools in District 15 came together for a beautiful performance at Stafford High School. District 15 is only one of two districts in the state of Virginia that offers this opportunity to its students. We are proud to say that 11 of the 22 schools that participated in this year's event were right here from Spotsavany County. The talented students and dedicated music teachers standing before you today are from Brock Road, Chancellor, Courthouse Road, Cortland, Lee Hill, Parkside, Riverview, RE Lee, Salem, Spotswood, and Wilderness Elementary. This evening, they will be singing a Ganya's folk song, "Dwee Dwee," and an excerpt from "Singing to Share with the World." The chorus will be directed by Melanie Bolus and accompanied by Kathy Pellegrin.
Well, that was a lovely way to start the evening. Mrs. Fennard, would you like to let us know about the Cedar Forest Buddy Program?
I may. Madam Chair, may I take a moment to allow our students to escort out, and I know that I'm sure their families are probably going to want to get them home if they've not been fed and have some homework to do.
Of course.
Thank you.
Now you may continue, Mrs. Fennard.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Cedar Forest Elementary School is home to several low-incidence special education programs, including two programs for students who are intellectually disabled. Last spring, a third-grade student shared with the principal an idea for a buddy program for students with special needs. Her vision for the program involved educating and involving typically developing students to help enrich the inclusion of students with special needs. She wanted to see students with special needs interacting with all of their classmates in a variety of situations at school, and she wanted to see her peers making an effort to include one another. Focusing on less structured and more social times, such as lunch and recess for the buddy program, Cedar Forest has already noticed a positive impact on social skills for all of their students. This buddy program is called "The Crew," and it focuses on supporting students in grades three through five in the ID Moderate Program at Cedar Forest. Current fourth-grade student, Chrysanthi Euripides, will share her vision, her leadership, and results of Cedar Forest's first buddy program with the assistance of Ms. Peggy Taft, scope teacher, and Ms. Lindsey Rose, special education teacher.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
All righty. Back when I was still studying to be a special education teacher, I had an idea of all students coming together regardless of their ability level. This idea somehow got pushed on the to-do list over and over again, and three years later, a third grader brought that vision into fruition. And so with that, I present you, Chrysanthi.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. Hi, my name is Chrysanthi Euripides. I'm a fourth-grade student at Cedar Forest Elementary School, and I'm here to tell you about my, the results of the buddy program. So, um, the buddy program is just a group of students at special, um, at Cedar Forest that just come and play with the special needs students, and they demonstrate being fun, and they're just fun, including respectful. They're leaders and they're very kind to these kids. Um, the problem we solved was, so, at school, I saw that the students with special needs, um, weren't really hanging out with the typical kids. They weren't interacting. And I look back at when I'm with my brother, who has special needs, and, um, I'm playing with him and I'm doing homework with him, and I don't see that happening at school. And I kind of wanted to start seeing that happening. So, these kids were differently abled, and they were not socially interacting with their peers, and they weren't growing social skills. So, um, so we came up with the buddy program. The teachers, how we rolled out the buddy program was the teachers were nominated exceptional students that were showing kindness, responsibility, and they were leaders. Um, they signed a confidential, a confidential, a confidential form, and, and the buddies were trained on the needs of the students, which was, we trained them to explain the types of abilities that they need, simple explanations and slow, um, simple explanations. They required more one-to-one assistance. And we used this training, um, in planned opportunities for structured interaction. So after a while of the buddy program, um, of buddy program events, we started, we had a student survey, and the students with special needs, um, the results of the student survey they took was, um, 85.7% of the students with special needs liked having buddies. 14.3% of the, um, students with special needs did not like having buddies. So 100% of the students with special needs saw the buddies more often. The volunteers, the result of their student survey was that they had, 100% of the volunteers felt more comfortable around the students with special needs. 100% of the volunteers thought that the students with special needs liked being around them. 100% of the volunteers had fun being with the students with special needs. 87.5% of the students thought that it made them a better person, but 12.5% of the volunteers thought it maybe made them a better person. 100% of the volunteers would participate in it next year. The result of the buddy program was that the kids with special needs liked having, had more friends, and we see the kids playing with this, we see the kids with special needs playing with the typical kids at recess and at lunch, and we see increased interaction during unstructured times. Students outside of the buddy program are playing with the students with special needs. For example, I was playing with a couple of the special needs students, and then there were two typical kids that didn't even know what the buddy program was, and they came in and they were just playing with the special needs students with me. And then another incident was when I literally just went up and high-fived one of the students with special needs, and like three other typical kids that had no idea what the buddy program was, offered to play with, um, this student, and I just thought that was great. So, some improvements that, um, we would like was to expand opportunities to the cafeteria. Um, we'd still like to see a little bit more interaction at the cafeteria. And academic tutoring, um, this is really just like helping them with some subjects that they're struggling on, or even showing them how the library works really, you know? Um, and the volunteers, um, we wanted more, um, time with these kids. Um, we wanted more events, and the student survey, um, there was a couple improvements that the volunteers had in mind, and the survey results showed that three out of eight of the volunteers felt the buddy program was already great. Four out of eight of the volunteers said it would be great if there was more interaction. One out of eight of the volunteers said that the crew should have lunch together. So, these are just some pictures of interactions, um, like events. Um, that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Oh, questions?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Well, I just want to say what a wonderful program this seems, and I think you guys have done an amazing job. And are there any questions? Mr. Braswell.
Thank you. I want you to say again your name, please.
My name is Chrysanthi Euripides.
Chrysanthi. All right. Now, what I want you to do is I want you to turn around and face the audience. And audience, I want you guys to see this young face. She is truly the epitome of the saying that it, the greatest compensation in life is to give to others without expecting anything back. You, ma'am, are my hero, and I'd like for everyone here to give her a round of applause.
Thank you.
You changed the world, girl.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Twig.
Just a, just a comment. As the staunchest of supporters for special education in our community and particularly in our, within our school system, I applaud you and your fellow students toward expressing that big heart and the care for, for others, uh, in, at such a young age, that's really meaningful and touching to a lot of people, and so I know you're going for it. Bless you.
So, um, this is one of our special needs students, and his name is Andrew, and he would like to say something about the buddy program.
Andrew, what do you think of having so many friends?
Best.
Lots of friends.
Yeah.
Do you like it?
Yeah.
You want more?
Yep.
I think Mrs. Phelps had her hand up.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me? Thank you so much for, um...
Yeah.
For, for coming up there. Yeah, I like that. You know, um, oh, we're all humans here, and you just showed everybody in this room that we are. We are humans, no matter what, and, um, and I really appreciate it, and, and I commend your parents, um, and the teachers, and, uh, thank you for being a trailblazer here in Spotsavany County and, um, in your school, and, uh, I really appreciate it. Thank you for coming here. Thank you.
Ms. Shelley.
You did an awesome job presenting. You're a leader. You're a speaker. You're, um, you've done an amazing job. Now I'm ready for you to take it on the road and maybe introduce it to some of our other elementary schools, if not all of them, sometime or another. Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Does that conclude the questions? Well, thanks for coming to see us this evening. And that'll bring us to item 11 on the agenda, recognitions and awards, and I would like to recognize our sheriff, Roger Harris, is with us in the audience this evening, so we welcome him to our school board meeting. And that brings us to item 11.01, Chancellor High School Vocal Ensemble invited to perform at Carnegie Hall. Mrs. Fennard.
Thank you. The Chancellor High School Vocal Ensemble recently completed a residency and performance at Carnegie Hall in New York City. The group was invited to perform by the staff of Distinguished Concerts International New York. DCINY staff member Jeff Beiner discovered the group through a video of the vocal ensemble posted on YouTube. The 27 members of the group rehearsed in New York City under the direction of Maestro Jean Sebastian Ballet, and alongside choirs from Canada, England, France, the Netherlands, and of course, the United States. They were the only high school group to be invited to sing with Maestro Ballet. The group performed "Requiem" by Maurice de Roufflet, accompanied by a professional string orchestra, a professional organist, a professional mezzo-soprano, and bass soloist. Tonight, they will sing "Water Night" by Eric Whitaker and "Veni, Veni" by John Michael Trotta. Chancellor High School Carnegie Group was directed by Rhonda Miller.
Silence and solitude, too little than a bosom moon, and drink in your eyes, drink in those waters.
I know that Ms. Daniels is going to want to take a quick picture, if that's okay, while we have you all engaged at the front of the board. And while Ms. Daniels is coming up, if we could have the family and the friends of our amazing musicians with their voices this evening, if you could please stand to be recognized, because it does take a lot of support for our students. So, if you could please stand. Thank you and congratulations.
And if you can continue with 11.02.
Thank you. March is Youth Art Month. Fine arts teachers highlight the importance of fine arts education by special activities within schools and communities. One of the ways the visual art teachers recognized Youth Art Month is by a countywide display here at the school board office and at the recent Culture à la Carte Festival. The pieces of artwork you see in the boardroom and displayed around the school board office represent 25 of the schools. These students were recognized and received certificates of appreciation at a reception held in their honor prior to this meeting beginning.
And on to 11.03, Superintendent's Art Award.
Thank you. The March Superintendent's Award winner for outstanding visual art goes to Adriana Minor. She is a seventh grader at Spotsylvania Middle School. Her artwork will hang in Dr. Baker's office this month. We would like to thank Adriana and her art teacher, Ramona Morris, to come forward and to be recognized for their outstanding accomplishment. If we have any family from Adriana here, if they could please stand to be recognized as well?
Thank you, Ms. Flannard. We'll move on to 11.04, state competition recognition, swimming, wrestling, and indoor track.
Thank you. We have quite a few members this evening, and we have some amazing athletes. So, if you could please hold your applause to the end, it would be greatly appreciated. We would like to make sure that everyone hears their name accordingly. So, tonight, we are pleased to recognize students who placed at the state competition for swimming, wrestling, and indoor track. As we call your group, please come forward to be recognized. Chancellor High School Swimming. Anyone from Chancellor High School Swimming? Okay, we're going to go ahead and read their names in case they are watching at home. Abby Cook, Brooke, Samilla, Jordan Shearer, and Sierra Gibson, 12th place 200 medley relay. Jordan Shearer, prelims, 100-yard butterfly and 12th place 200 IM. Abby Cook, prelims in the 50-yard freestyle and 15th place 100 backstroke. Brooke Samilla, 13th place 100 breaststroke. Abby Cook, Brooke Samilla, Erin Lipkin, and Sierra Gibson, 15th place 200 freestyle relay. Maddie Brown, Jordan Shearer, Peyton Parker, and Erin Lipkin, 15th place 400 freestyle relay. Chancellor High School Boys had one member qualify for the state meet, and Cole Hudak made the prelims in the boys' 200-yard IM, and their coaches, Patrick Boge and John Giannoni. If we have students for indoor track and field from Chancellor High, could you please come forward? All right. Please come forward. And if you would, if you would raise your hand, as I say, so that individuals can make sure that we acknowledge you, that would be greatly appreciated. Okay, we have Akayla Edwards, Joselyn Jones, Annalise Sutton, and Shakia Rivers, state champions, first place 4x200 relay. Akayla Edwards... Raise your hand again. Fourth place 55m hurdle and fifth place 300-meter dash. Joselyn Jones, second place long jump and third place triple jump. Mark Edwards, De Quintum, Jeremiah Chukku, Micah Harris, Jonathan Pryor, sixth place 4x400 relay. Jonathan Pryor, top 100 finish 500-meter dash. Coaches Sylvia Williams, Dion Cheeks, Claudia Saylevin, and Ron Eddington. If our students from Chancellor High for wrestling could please come forward. Chancellor High Wrestling. Michael Crater was third place 170-weight class, and our coaches, George Holsworth and James Holsworth. If our students from Cortland High Swimming could please come forward. Kayden's going to take it for all of Cortland. For Swimming, Nick Ashton, state champion, first place 50 freestyle and third place 100 freestyle. Ryland Leopold, fourth place 100 butterfly and eighth place 100 backstroke. Tyler Lowe, Kayden Moore, Ryland Leopold, Nick Ashton, third place 200 freestyle relay. There, he is standing here. Good job, Kayden. Carolyn Storin, eighth place 200 freestyle, and coaches are William Graff and Lindsay Williams. If our students from Cortland High that participated in indoor track and field could come forward, please. Don't be shy, I see you. Come on. For indoor track and field, once your name is called, if you could please acknowledge, we have Jacob Volbret, state champion, first place shot put. Joel Whitmore, second place shot put. Savannah Rourke, third place 1600-meter run. Zach Waddes, third place 300-meter dash. Garrett Howard, Addie Burrow, Matthew Spicer, Zach Waddes, second place 4x400m relay, and fifth place were 4x200 relay. And the coaches are Breck Hall, Mark McDougall, Rex Sappenfield, Tracy Jackson, and Jessie Johnson. From Massaponics High School, if the indoor track and field could come forward. Tonight, we have Aleah Pyatt, third place 500-dash. Aleah Pyatt, Brianna Ingram, Emily Catlett, Alexa Bogan, eighth place 4x400 relay. And I don't see it on my paper, but I'm assuming Anthony Bramlett is coach. And Maurice Hutton. Thank you. I didn't even see you over there, sir. Thank you. Thank you. I do not believe that Riverbend High Swimming is here this evening. If they are, please come forward. Okay, we have Luke De Rocher, fourth place 100 butterfly and third place 100 backstroke. Coach Rachel Adriani. Riverbend High School Indoor Track and Field, if you'd come forward, please. This evening, we have Jaren Holmes, fifth place high jump and fifth place triple jump. Coaches Anthony Wallace and Chris Markham. Riverbend Wrestling, if you could please come forward. And if you could please raise your hand as your name is called, we have Mason Fair, fourth place 195. Zach Ortega, fifth place 120. Clay Rankin, fifth place 113. Coaches Mark Roberts and Antonio Kibler. From Spotsylvania High School, if we could have indoor track and field, please come forward. This evening, we have Lamaya Coleman, state champion, first place high jump 6'6". Coaches Rick Martinez. Spotsylvania High Wrestling, if you could please come forward. For wrestling this evening, we have Reese Rucabo, second place. Tucker Sorrell, fourth place. Durham Chase, sixth place. Alex Childress, sixth place. Coach Gary Woods. We have great athletes in Spotsylvania County, and that is not done without the support of families. So, families, could you please stand to be recognized? of families, so families, could you please stand to be recognized? Congratulations to everyone, and also thank you so much, coaches, for all of your support as well. They might want to go do homework as well. Okay, Ms. Flannard, we'll move on to 11.05, DECA recognizes outstanding school-based enterprises?
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. We are pleased to share that the school-based enterprise pride supply at Massaponics High School was among 391 school-based enterprises nationwide achieving gold level certification this year. They will be recognized at DECA's International Career Development Conference in Atlanta, Georgia. A school-based enterprise, SBE, is an entrepreneurial operation in a school setting that provides goods and services to meet the needs of the market. SBEs are managed and operated by students as hands-on learning laboratories that integrate national curriculum standards in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Marketing educators and DECA advisors have used this effective educational tool for over four decades to provide their students with realistic and practical learning experiences that reinforce classroom instruction, enhance 21st century skill development, and prepare students for college and careers. Congratulations to all of the students for their hard work, keep up the great job, and a big thank you to our Massaponics High School teacher advisors, Ms. Saunders, Ms. Johansson, Mr. Olsa, who, without their support, valuable student learning experiences such as DECA would not be possible. And if they're in the audience this evening, if they could come forward, please.
11.06, Lions Club Peace Poster Contest.
For the last 31 years, Lions Clubs around the world have proudly sponsored the Lions International Peace Poster Contest in local schools and youth groups. This art contest for skills for kids encourages young people worldwide to express their visions of peace. Lions Club member Walter Panino will be handing out the awards to the following students and to their art teachers.
I want to thank you so very much for inviting us to partake in this wonderful evening. The Chancellor Lions Club has been partnering with the Spotsylvania County Schools for 40 years. We have assisted with eye care, hearing, helping the school nurses whenever we get a call, helping stuff the bus, and this year, we bought dictionaries for our 3rd grade Spanish-speaking students. The Peace Poster Contest is an international contest, 1.5 million participants around the world. Our winners that we have tonight each won their school locally. And from local, they go to state, from state, they go to international. Unfortunately, we didn't have an international winner this year, but we had some really nice ones. With me, I have our club president, Betty Burgess, and our chairman of our organization for the peace poster, Jennifer Gregory. And each of the winners will get $25, and our overall winner gets 50. So when we call your name, please come up. From Battlefield, the teacher, Jessica Martinez, and Hannah Kelly. And this is her poster, and please stand with your poster. From Oak Post, Post Oak, Casey Brom and her student Amelia Mayby. From Chancellor, the teacher Shannon McKay, and Imelit Gutierrez. Well, we'll have someone hold her poster, it's a very beautiful one. From Freedom Intermediate, Andrew Becker, the teacher, and the student Nicholas Brown. From Spotsylvania Middle School, Ramona Morse and her student Jada Gordon. And the one our club voted for the winner, and I might add, we had 556 students participated in this activity. These are our past year's winners for the Lions Club International and the Chancellor Lions Club. I might add that one of our past winners is now head and dean of the School of Communication Arts and Design at Valencia College, I just thought I would say so. For you who want the art world, this is your stepping stone. Okay?
11.07, Culture à la Carte Recognition.
Thank you. Culture à la Carte is a countywide festival celebrating music, art, theater, and world languages in our community. This festival celebrates World Language Week, which is March 4th through the 10th, music and theater in our schools, and Youth Art Month. This event offered performances from K-12 choir groups, all-county band and orchestra, Spotsylvania High School's theater improvisation, and exhibits of student artwork. In addition, the day provided a collaborative environment for world language classes and clubs to share what they are learning, the language and culture through crafts, art, dance, music, and food. With the community at large, this year was our 10th annual festival. And we would like to honor the following teachers who earned their five-year and 10-year participation plaque this year. These teachers have earned their five-year plaque, if you could please come forward. Jessica Martinez. Unfortunately, Jessica's unable to be with us. The following individuals have earned their 10-year plaques. Rebecca Behring, art Brock Road and co-coordinator.
And she had to go too.
Melanie Bolus, I saw Melanie. There she is. Music Chancellor Elementary. Isabel de Morel, Spanish Chancellor High School. Rhonda Cappas, music RE Lee and founding coordinator. Caitlin Lefaro, art Chancellor Elementary. And in addition, we would like to recognize four world language teachers who demonstrated excellent teacher leadership preparing for and holding the Culture à la Carte Festival. Beth Marshall, French Riverbend High School. Barbara Kovalek, German Chancellor High School. David Yates, Latin Spotsylvania Middle and Nye River Middle Schools. And partner, Jessie Lacy, Spanish Riverbend High School.
Mrs. Flannard, 11.08, National Foreign Language Week Poster.
Thank you. National Foreign Language Week was inaugurated in the spring of 1957 endorsed by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Among the many organized activities with the purpose of making the American student aware of the vital necessity of foreign language study is our annual poster contest. This year's theme was "Language Leads Us All on a Path to Understanding Other Cultures." And the winners in the 2D category are Francesca Garcia, Post Oak Middle School, French program Second place Carolyn Copeland, Riverbend High School, Spanish program teacher Maria Navarro
Third place Isabella Wickens, Spotsylvania Middle School, French program teacher Lee
The winners in the digital posters category are, 1st place Nakia Dallas, Cortland High
And again, if these students have family members with them, if they could please stand The Sedexo Healthy High School National Challenge Awards.
Good evening, the High School Healthy Challenge is a national challenge for all Sedexos High Schools throughout the country. It's basically based on percentage of students buying healthy snacks based on their student population, so these levels the playing field. I'm happy to report this year that all five of our high schools were receiving funds, and Spotsy for the fourth year in a row was our top 15th in the country, so $1,000 to them, and this year, we also had Cortland get $1,000. And then our remaining 3F 500, so I guess we'll start off with Spotsy since they've been our top dollars.
And 11.10, the ASBO Certification for Fiscal Credibility. Founded in 1910, the Association of School Business Officials International, ASBO, is a nonprofit organization that represents approximately 30,000 school business professionals worldwide. We are pleased to announce that LaShawn Gaines, the Chief Financial Officer for Spotsylvania County Public Schools, has earned certification from the Association of School Business Officials International as a Certified Administrator of School Finance and Operation, FSO, for fiscal credibility. The SFO designation is granted to highly qualified school business professionals who fulfill multiple requirements, including demonstrating certification eligibility through work experience and education, passing a comprehensive two-part exam that tests competency in accounting and school business management topics, and adhering to the ASBO International Certification Code of Conduct. Worldwide, out of the 30,000 school business officials, there are 330 school business officials who have earned the SFO certification, of which 10 serve as school business officials in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Mrs. Gaines is one of only the 10 in Virginia. Please join us in congratulating Ms. LaShawn Gaines, our Chief Financial Officer.
We are now on to public comments, 12.01, Dr. Martin.
The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that you clearly state their name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time for the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues, and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Our first speaker is Megan Jackson.
Hello, good evening. My name is Megan Jackson, and I live in the Lee Hill District. Was there something else I was supposed to state? Is that it? Okay.
Please be sure to speak into the microphone.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just want to say how nice it was this evening to see all these students and everyone else recognized. This was very positive. Unfortunately, I'm taking a little bit of a different direction right now. 11, 10, 5, and 8 months, those are the ages of my four beautiful children, three daughters and my baby boy. I am an advocate for them in every single way, and that's why I'm here tonight. And not only for them, for all other kids who need a voice that attend public schools. I come before you tonight to urge you to please make the necessary changes to make our schools safer. They, I know I won't have enough time to thoroughly address my concerns, but in all honesty, this should be easy. It's obvious that our schools are not safe enough, and there are things that we can take, steps that we can take to make them safer. Kids today are going to school in a completely different world, and the fact that I have to have a conversation with my kindergartner on how to play dead if an active shooter comes into her school is utterly heartbreaking. I am begging for action because talk is getting us nowhere, and it's time to stop talking, and it's time to take these conversations and make a plan. So, nothing is 100%. Every day we walk out of our house, anything can happen. We know that, okay? But when we send our kids to school, they're already dealing with enough, and there are steps that we can take to make sure that these schools are as safe as they can possibly be. So, let's look for some solutions. I have quite a lot, and I know I don't have enough time. At any point, if anyone would like to speak to me outside of this and set up a meeting, I'd be more than happy to. Let's start with the most controversial thing, metal detectors. And I'm talking about at least the high school level. There are a lot of kinks to be worked out, the time, the cost, the people to run them, but it's possible, and I have a lot of ideas on that as well. And honestly, the cost is not as expensive as you'd think because I have done my research, and a decent model is between $2,000 and $4,000. Other than that, there are safe spaces, panic buttons, steel doors, bulletproof glass, and a lot of these things are going to cost a way a lot more than metal detectors. Another thing that's simple, an alternative to metal detectors, it's not as effective, but it is proactive, clear backpacks. I'm not sure why we're not already doing this. This is, this serves as a deterrent. It's going to make it harder to get something into the school, and the cost is on the parents. I buy my kids a new backpack every year, and I have no problem buying them one now. We can, we can implement this right now. Officers, we need more officers in schools. We need at least one officer in every single school, including elementary schools. Sharing them, it's just not good enough. Whether that's hiring private security, armed security outside of, you know, outside of the county officers, I believe there are ways to get around that, to bring people in. We really need this. IDs. You get buzzed into the school, and then you have your ID scanned. Now, I think there is a way that we can check IDs before we are letting people into the school. We're doing it backwards. We're letting them in, and then we're scanning their IDs. At this point, they've already entered the building, and a problem can already arise. You could cut a small slit in that glass when you walk in and just slip the ID through, scan, and we're good. It's not that hard. And the last thing, and very important, mental health. It needs to be taken seriously, and the schools need more hands, more counselors and more social workers. The teachers are underpaid, unappreciated, yet they're jumping in front of bullets to save their students. My kids. Bring the people we need in there so teachers can do the job they're meant to do. The children are our future, and we need to do everything we can to make sure they have one. I can't put a price tag on my child's life, or any other child for that matter, can you? Thank you.
Michelle Williams.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Williams. I'm at 14200 West Catharpen Roads, Spotsylvania, Virginia. I have two children that attend Post Oak Middle. Following up on what Megan said, school safety is an issue. I dread sending my kids to school in the morning, and I exhale when they come home. That's what I do, every day. There was a threat called into the school in December, a child that, into my children's school, a child that wanted to hurt people. And the threat was, seemed to be credible, or he said, "I'm either going to come into," I'm trying to watch what I say because we have children in the room. There was a credible threat, and he threatened to hurt himself as well. Within an hour of getting that social media post, everyone got an email from Post Oak saying, "It's been taken care of, it's been handled." Well, no, it hasn't been handled, nothing has been handled. You may detain that person. What made him go to that spot? According to his post, he was bullied, and he was bullied bad. And when you're bullied like that, your power is taken away from you. You want to fight back, you want to get that power back. And I feel like that was something that he was doing. That doesn't give him any excuse for what he did. He should have been punished for what he did. But is anybody trying to help this child? Because my children are bullied on a daily basis. I'm helping them at home, but I don't feel like they're getting help in the schools. Just looking at the stats for incident reports for 2016, 2017, I'm not 100% sure on that number, but I do believe that bullying incidents were marked at the number three. I called in three or four myself. You know, are they, is it going into my children's files? What happens after it goes into my children's files? It seems like nothing gets done. This child that called in the threat to, I'm sorry, that posted that there was, you know, he was going to take action in school, I found out from my kids, he's now walking the halls again. Really? Because I thought if it was a terrorist threat, you would get kicked out of school indefinitely. I had to hear this from my kids that he was back in school. I find that sad. Mom, why is he there? I don't know, honey, I don't know. I believe in recidivism, 100%, I do, but I don't believe in 30 days this child receives help. And he is all better and ready to walk the halls with my children. I have, I have a big issue with that. Children don't seem to be held accountable for their actions, be it at school or be it at home. I think when a child bullies another child, threatens another child, I think at that point, they should lose some days in school, they should go home and inconvenience their parents a little bit. Make the parents stay home with the children, you know, the ones that are acting, can get rides from their parents so they're not on the bus bullying other children. This is a daily thing with us, you know? My kids are easy targets, they're, they're nice, good kids, they're not perfect, but they know better than to bully another child. And they stick up for their friends, and I've watched them do this. We need to see a lot more of that. You know, it's getting worse. The one incident that I'm going to bring up is back in 2017, April. I had just had a double mastectomy and found out that my child was bullied to the point where she wanted to commit suicide. She didn't, she signed. I helped her through it. She was told to go kill herself, days upon days. She didn't tell me about it because she was worried about me. She didn't want me to know. I got ahold of the school, and I said, "I want something done about it." All I got was, "It's a gray area. We can't help you. We can't discipline these kids because some of this was done over social media." I don't care, the relationship started in school. And it is also in the student code of conduct. That cyberbullying is also unacceptable.
Ms. Williams, forgive me for interrupting, but your time has expired. Would you like to request additional time from the board?
If I can get two more minutes, that'd be great.
Madam Chair.
Recommend.
Allohs in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proceed.
Thanks. In closing, on the heels of that conversation that I had with my daughter, it was about a week after that, I was in the kitchen, I was cooking dinner, I called her name, she didn't answer. It was a long, lonely walk to her bedroom to make sure she was okay. She was sleeping, she was fine, but nobody should ever have to feel that. Bottom line, I believe something needs to be done about these bullying incidents and adhering to the student code of conduct. My children sign it, they follow it every day to the letter. I would like to see the children that are causing trouble have to follow that same code of conduct, because they're not, I assure you. And I would like to see the teachers and staff follow through with the student code of conduct. What's already in place is good. It's good. Could use a little help, but it's pretty good. You know, it's, it's pretty good, but not holding children accountable for their actions is not helping anybody. So, that's what I ask. My time is done, thank you.
Scott Phelps.
I may need some extra time as well. Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Scott Phelps, and I'm from the Lee Hill District. The young lady who spoke before about the Buddy Program, this might be a viable solution for the entire student population. You know, before the walkout, that's scheduled for March 14th, I'd like to share a few facts I find interesting. Like everybody here and all parents across the country, we're trying to figure out why school shootings continue to happen, and it seem like they're on an increase here. One thing I could identify to have correlating data here is, since the 1960s to present day, our nation, when comparing decade to decade, I pulled stats from the consensus bureau, you can see a rapid drop in two-parent households. Starting in 1960 to 1970, we saw the largest drop of 9%. It's, in the 1960s, two-parent households were 87%, and currently we're at 65%. That's a 22% drop. In that same time period, gun-related school incidents on or near school property has inversely gone up. In the 1960s, we had 18 incidences. 2010s, there were 145 incidences. Comparing the last two decades, gun-related incidents have increased 130% this decade, and we have one more year to go. The next largest increase was the 60s and 70s, when we saw the drop in two-parent households, we saw an increase of 30% in gun-related incidences at schools. The top four, well, okay, back up to 2010s, this decade, of those 145 incidences, 68 of them involved K through 12 students. The top four reasons why they occurred, according to the articles related to them, drug deals gone wrong, gang-related, school sports, post-game grudges, and bullying. Those seeking revenge, either the bully being kicked out of school, or the ones that are being bullied. Something else interesting happened at the beginning of this decade that might explain why there was such a rapid increase in gun-related incidents on or near schools. In 2010, the U.S. Attorney General, the Department of Justice, and the Department of Education formed an agreement where law enforcement would take a hands-off approach to disciplining children on school grounds. The Department of Education established a federal program called PROMICE, and would offer grants to local school districts that would implement this program to drive down disproportionate statistics. Out of this idea came the term School-to-Prison Pipeline. On December 5th, 2016, in the Freelance Star article pertaining to an MOU being drafted, I quote, "The new draft is still being finalized, has not yet been approved by the school board," according to the school spokeswoman. The spokeswoman said previously that the district already was treating improvements in discipline as a priority, but appreciates community feedback. On May 27th, 2017, in a Freelance Star article, it describes an effort by the Spotsy School Superintendent to lessen punitive responses to misbehavior. An activist group, small, worked hand-in-hand with the superintendent and the sheriff's office to reduce the number of students referred to law enforcement by signing a memorandum of understanding in February 2017. My concern here is, why wasn't this MOU brought in front of the school? My concern here is, why wasn't this MOU brought in front of the school board for a vote? I have reviewed all the board documents twice over to make sure I wasn't making a misstatement here. From December 2016 to present day, none of the school board meeting action items list this as a topic of consideration. Where was that, the parents' opportunity to have community feedback, as stated in the article? In the article, it also mentions a thing called restorative practices, and as stated in that article, were incorporated into an intervention plan section of the student code of conduct in May 2017. From the article, I quote, "A restorative practice can be as simple as I am sorry." I would like to see those intervention plan statistics once we reach the end of the school year, that would be a 12-month period. I would like to know whatever came of the threat assessment team policies formed in November 2017, and how those policies do not contradict the MOU signed only nine months beforehand.
Mr. Phelps, forgive me for interrupting, would you like to request additional time?
I would like additional time, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Continue, sir.
Thank you. In relation to the first lady who came up and spoke, parents, if you have concerns about the security of our schools, I invite you to look up Virginia House Bills HB 2343 and 1392. They were passed in 2013, 2017, authorizing the schools to harden the security posture of them and also hire armed guards if chosen to do so. But I'm here to address bullying because I believe, in my opinion, that this is the main reason why school shootings occur. The other part being family structure, discipline of kids at home, and then continuing into the school system. I've heard many parents say their child who was bullied was removed from class to de-escalate the situation. That hardly addresses the one committing the infraction. I have heard students say that a teacher sees bullying or unwarranted physical contact occur. The bully is reprimanded, yet the bully can stay for the remainder of the class. I've heard multiple cases where a group of students experienced bullying at the hands of one student for the duration of an entire school year. I've heard teachers state that they're just being kids when a parent complains about what's happening to their child. I've heard teachers say, you don't understand. There are parents who just don't get involved, they don't care, and we are left to deal with their children. I've heard teachers say, you don't understand. When parents come in, they say their child would never do something like that. Not my kid. I've heard teachers say they're afraid to speak up for fear of reprisal by the school system in relation to bullying. I have seen multiple videos of fights that play out, it seems, on a weekly basis at the high school level. And those kids are jumping up and down cheering the fact that they're students in a full-on brawl and faculty trying to wrestle to the ground to get ahold of the situation. We have all that, and then this. Last week, I had the privilege of meeting a bright, well-spoken 12-year-old who attends at Spotsy Middle School. That student shared their experience on bullying. The student told me, and I quote, "I can't go on anymore. The bullying is nonstop. The parents have tried addressing this issue with the child and the schools for months, yet the bullying continues." What do you tell a kid that says that to you? There is no voice advocating for the child other than the parents. My child has experienced bullying on a repeated basis the last two years. We try to impart coping mechanisms for him to properly deal with it. But as a parent, when you must try and explain why it keeps on happening, you start to run out of excuses and possible solutions. We have had to resort to telling him the reality of the situation in public schools, the reality of why school shootings happen, and the possible reasons why someone felt it necessary to make threats to shoot up Thornburg Middle School. I am a parent that does care and is involved in my child's education. If you stop the bullying, you hold each individual student accountable for their actions. Overall grades will go up because they're able to concentrate, and you decrease the risk of the unthinkable. And that would be another Parkland situation. And when it comes to bullying, I say, not my kid anymore. Thank you.
Jennifer Wallace.
Hello, Jennifer Wallace, 10606 Tidewater Plains. You know, I really don't know what's going to come out my mouth, to be honest with you. When this last shooting happened, I was outraged as a parent. I'm sitting in my living room screaming, and I don't understand why any other parent is not coming up and speaking. You know, that, that threat was eight miles from Cedar Forest. I pulled Morgan that day. I was not going to allow my kid to go to school and my daughter be buried. It's not going to happen. You know, I'm at a point where I feel like I want to pull my daughter because of all these threats. My question is, when, you know, I go into Cedar Forest, I go through the front doors, and on the right, they buzz you in, you get your ID check, blah, blah, blah. And my question is, is there bulletproof glass there? Because if somebody's got a machine gun, they get through that first door, they, they got a gun that can shoot up right there. That's my concern. I'm, I'm a parent first, you know? And before I had a kid, it probably would have never, that stuff probably would have never hit me like it does when you're a mama bear. And, you know, I would have thought that when Sandy Hook happened, that we would have done something then, because did you see all those kids on the ground? Did you see all these beautiful kids perform tonight? It could be one of them. And I got an issue with that. I got an issue with, there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot of avenues you can go. I mean, Scott spoke a lot about, you know, a lot of things, and Megan and Michelle, you know? There needs to be change happening somewhere. I don't know where it is. I don't have the answers. I'm just a parent looking for those answers. But, you know, when you're at a point where you hear this, where a kid wants to commit suicide, did you hear about the kid that went into school, shot himself? You know, I mean, is this, I mean, really? I mean, are we really looking at all the situations that are going on in the world, in our states, and everything? It's worldwide. I mean, not worldwide, but within certain states. It's happening all the time. This is not normal. Let's wake the heck up. You know, I don't, I don't get it. And we sit here, and we're like, oh, you know, I mean, what are we doing? That's my child. Those are her kids. They're a child of God. You know? I hear, you know, all these different stories tonight, you know? And I'm like, okay, I heard stories where there's bullying, but then they pull, the bully stays in the classroom, and the student that's getting bullied gets pulled out of the class to go sit for a while in the principal's office, I've heard that. Excuse me, I know that when I was in school and somebody was being bullied, they got pulled from disrupting the class. So, you know, things are backwards, as far as I'm concerned, because the way I grew up and the way the school system was was totally different than the way it is today. I just don't understand whether or not get disciplined. I, I got pulled from classes, I've done some things, and I've, you know, been disciplined, straight to the principal's office and dealt with, with my parents. So, you know, the parents need to know what's going on, how, how these things are happening. You know, and there was talk about, about this walkout. Why, why are we doing a walkout? The school teacher posted something about, why don't you take that time and look at the kid in the corner that's sitting by himself that nobody's paying attention to? Or the one on the bus that sits by himself? Or the one in the lunchroom that sits by himself? That's not part of a social, because they're not accepted in that. They're not being looked at. The teachers are aware of these things. They're in their classroom. That's our next shooter, possibly. Are we not looking at that? You know, I'm here because I want to see change. And I, and if I got to pull my kid and educate her myself, that's what I will do. But I'd rather you try to implement change somewhere. I don't know where this all begins. I mean, it's, it's happening all over. We're getting threats. There was a threat just a little while ago at the town center. You know, I mean, I know this is the schools, but this is all over. I don't know what the answer is. I'm just want change. I'm an upset parent, and I don't understand why there's not any more upset parents. Sandy Hook should have been the last one, as far as I'm concerned. You know, that's where I'm at with this. You know, that's my kid. God gave me that gift. And I'm going to protect her. So my minutes are up, but that's, that's how I feel. I just wanted to express it, I want to, I want to see change. These lovely kids are important. All these kids that were here tonight were important. You supposed to make them important. My time's up, thank you.
Tamara Quick.
Hi, my name's Tamara Quick, and I live in the Livingston District. Thank you for the time to speak with you all tonight. I wanted to speak on behalf of my son, a fifth grader at Brock Road Elementary, the Decoding Dyslexia Advocacy Group, and the 4,000-plus students here in Spotsylvania County Public Schools with dyslexia who are not being identified and whose needs are currently not being met. My son showed reading struggles when we moved here when he was in first grade. We now know he went through an intervention process called an RTI in second grade, but we were never informed. After second grade, he went to summer school for at-risk readers. Yet the school can find no records of his attendance or what sort of progress he made or didn't make. In third grade, he failed his reading benchmarks. He was under grade level for reading and made it to barely at grade level at the end of the year as he failed his third-grade SOLs. There's no records of any intervention or remediation for my son. I remember clearly talking to his third-grade teachers about my concerns. I have an email where I asked if he could have a learning disability. I was told emphatically, no, he did not have a learning disability. He was just a slow reader, and I should let it go and move on. It was rinse and repeat in fourth grade. As he was barely at grade level, failed the reading SOL miserably, yet passed advanced for history. He was by all accounts a very bright student, I was told by all of his teachers, but struggled with reading, spelling, and writing. There's no indication in his student file of any intervention time or remediation time or programs. In fifth grade, I was timing, I decided it was time to follow my gut instead of listening to the teachers in school where I had placed all of my faith in knowing about his educational needs. After private testing in fifth grade, we discovered he was actually reading at a first-grade reading level. His scores varied from 5th percentile, which is well below average, to 95th percentile, which is in the gifted range. He was twice exceptional, gifted with dyslexia and dysgraphia, reading and writing disabilities. The doctor was shocked that no one had noticed it. He must have said 100 times, I can't believe they missed this. The reading specialist at my son's school gasped, put her hand over her mouth and said, oh my gosh, how did we miss this? My son missed out on four years of reading books. The adventure, the imagination, the knowledge, the vocabulary you get from reading. Imagine a life without access to books. Imagine your life without your glasses here and being told you can't use your glasses. Between first and fourth grade, he read a total of four books. When we got his diagnosis and we switched to audiobooks, in 12 months, he has now read, excuse me, in four months, he has now read 12 books. He reads a book every 10 days, up from one book per year. Dyslexia is a specific learning difference in reading with neurobiological origin that affects 1 in 5 children in the United States. That is over 4,000 students here in Spotsylvania County schools. Dyslexia was clinically identified over 100 years ago. This is not a new disorder, this is not a rare disorder. While a child with dyslexia may have normal and oftentimes above-normal intelligence and often a great desire to learn, their brain simply processes letters, words, and characters differently. This makes it difficult to recognize letters, words, harder to comprehend and process written passages, and often challenging to read aloud or sound out a word or spelling. It's important to remember that while dyslexia is a neurobiological in origin, it has an educational solution, which is why I'm here. Early intervention is known to be highly effective, but dyslexia often goes undetected until late elementary school, exactly how it happened with my son, where effectiveness of intervention is greatly reduced. Specifically, research has shown that each year of delay in assessment can reduce the effectiveness of evidence-based quality reading intervention by as much as 50%. My son has lost four years he can never regain. With dyslexia, the problem is not a knowledge gap with the student, but an action gap with the school system and the school board. My eyes have been opened in the last four months, not only to what dyslexia is and how it presents itself, but to the special education process. IDEA, IEP, and a school's child find obligation are my new vernacular, terms I use every single day. I've recently started a local branch of the Decoding Dyslexia Organization here in Spotsylvania. We have four tenants, Identify Early with screenings that are appropriate for students with dyslexia. I'm going to go ahead and ask for an extra two minutes before the warning. Can I do that?
Recommend.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Please proceed.
Thank you. We have four tenants, Identification Early with Screenings Appropriate for Dyslexia, Intervention and Remediation That Is Evidence-Based. Orton-Gillingham is a multi-sensory instructional approach to education that not only has been successful for 100 years helping dyslexic students, but it's a program that works with every single student. An example is the Wilson Program that at one time was purchased for each school in this district. The program is sitting in the school buildings, yet not accessible. Teachers and staff need to be properly trained in Orton-Gillingham methods such as the Wilson Learning System, that's reading specialists, special ed, and general education teachers. In my child's school, none have been trained, none are able to help my son, and I've heard that from every single one of them in different forms. Access to technology is also imperative. Audiobooks, audio textbooks, and text-to-speech software, Chromebooks for all students. I heard someone in a nearby school system bemoan unfunded mandates and the legislature imposing additional burdens on school systems with recently passed laws related to dyslexia. This is not an unfunded mandate or a burden. This is what was already required by you all. Child find requires you to locate children with disabilities. We are simply asking for appropriate screening to identify early. IDEA and special education law requires you to serve the needs and give access to general curriculum to students with disabilities. Evidence-based remediation interventions and properly-trained teachers are necessary to meet that requirement. Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act requires accommodations to ensure needs are met. Access to technology meets this requirement. I urge you not to create a task force or have a committee or to think on it. The time is up for that. You have a very highly qualified staff here in this building who have been wonderful to work with. Thank you, Ms. Richardson, Ms. Jones, and Ms. Balaico. They need the resources and support of this body and of you, Dr. Baker. The time is now to make a change on your own, while you still have that opportunity, to work to be the best in the state at identifying and serving the needs of 1 in 5 students, over 4,000 students. Look at what is going on around the country with special education legislation and adjudications, and think about my story. Waiting would be far more expensive. Mr. Twig, you are my representative, and I heard you earlier say you are a staunch supporter of special education. This is 1 in 5 students. I hope you will take this up, and I urge you to insist on more resources for screening, proper programs, proper training, and proper technology now. You cannot wait any longer. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's all the speakers that signed up.
Everybody in the audience that did not sign up that wishes to address the board?
Hi, my name is April Gillespie. I live in the Berkeley District. My school board member is Erin Gramp. I live at 3651 Shirley's Hill Road. And I am here to talk about a petition that a group of parents and myself have started in Spotsylvania County. I wrote this petition. I'm going to read the petition to you. We are currently at 154 signatures and counting. I'm writing this petition for all of the students of Spotsylvania County Public Schools. Unfortunately, we are all familiar with the horrific events that continue to strike the schools of students and their families across the nation. In order to ensure the safety- In order to ensure the safety of the children in Spotsylvania County, additional safety procedures need to be put into effect. Finding funds to hire school security guards and bringing justice for our children is essential to the safety of our students. Another necessity is to enforce the Student Code of Conduct, which states, "It shall be the responsibility of all students to uphold and maintain specific standards of conduct." It is time the schools hold students more accountable for their actions and behavior. We have the highest of security in banks, airports, and our presidency, just to name a few. However, we should be placing the highest security on what matters the most, our children. And with that being said, you know, I've experienced bullying with my own child. Bullying, there's a difference between teasing and bullying. There's a difference between what we remember as children, you know, picking on the playground and, you know, oh, Sally's got, you know, four eyes or whatever. You know, there's a difference between that and physical abuse, telling people to kill themselves. My son personally has had to go through therapy, counseling, to the full extent. I am a huge advocate for anti-bullying. It is a problem here in Spotsylvania County, whether you want to admit it or not. It is here and we need help. Our kids need help. Our kids are going, they're becoming statistics. What are you doing? What are you doing? I know what we're doing as parents. We're fighting. We elected you to help us, to be our voices. Are you gonna do that for us? Because that's what we need you to do. That's what we need you to do. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience who wishes to address the board?
Would the woman that talks about dyslexia give me your notes before you leave, please?
They're a little...
Thank you.
That brings us to item 13 on the agenda, Special Reports. We'll start with 13.01, Board Committee Reports. Do we have any Board Committee Reports? Ms. Shelley?
Just an update for the regional special ed, the Northern Virginia Regional Special Ed Program. We had a meeting a couple weeks ago. We have, they have come up with the budget for the plan, the new tuition, which is reimbursable from the state. And I was once again elected the chairman of the Northern Virginia Regional Special Education Program, just so you're aware. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine?
Just a brief announcement. We have a group called the Governor, Commonwealth Governor's School, and they're celebrating their 20th anniversary this year. And on Thursday morning past, they had a breakfast for some of the former students, current students, some of our faculty was there. And we had unfortunately say farewell to the lady who's been the superintendent, the director for the last eight years and has been leading that school. Ms. Mary K. Vanderplow is unfortunately leaving us and we were very sorry to hear that. So she will be replaced and Governor's School will soon start its 21st year.
Any other Board Committee Reports? We'll move on to 13.02, the Special Education Annual Plan Application. Ms. Richardson?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Before I start tonight's presentation, I would like for the Office of Student Support Services Core Admin Team to stand up. I thank them for all of their hard work. I would also like to extend thanks to Mr. Phil Traer from our Finance Department. He is key in making sure that we meet our maintenance of effort on a yearly basis. So thank you, Mr. Traer. You all should have received a copy of the draft plan at your seats this evening. Wonderful. All right, our plan application for 2018-19 is based off of our December 1, 2017 child count, where we are currently serving 3,035 students as of December 1, 2017. We dropped our count today, as I typically like to give you sort of an update at the time of this presentation. As of March 12, 2018, we are currently serving 3,048 students that are eligible under IDEA as students with educational disabilities. The organization of the plan is similar to how it has been in past years. We certainly have our certifications. Juvenile Detention Center, which our local education agency does not support at this time. It gives you a summary of our narrative implementation for how we have supported students with disabilities for 2017-18. Our proportionate share calculation, those are the monies that we are obligated to set aside for students with disabilities that are parentally placed within our locality. Our maintenance of effort, as I mentioned, which is calculated by Mr. Traer and our Finance Department. Our application for school-age funds for 2018-19, and then our application for preschool funds for 2018-19. In February 2018, our Special Education Advisory Committee has received a copy of our draft and we will continue to work with them for input. We will follow up again with them in April 2018 for any final recommendations before presenting to the Board. Currently, our school-age funds are at about $4.4 million and our preschool funds are at $86,000. And these are just our federal funds. This is not factoring local and state monies. For 2017-18, we requested level funding from the previous year and for this, for the upcoming school year, 2018-19, we will also be requesting level funding from our federal government. We should receive notice of our annual plan application grant by July 1, 2018. What our grant currently supports? We currently fund 37 special education teachers, 16 special education paraeducators, and 7.45 special education support positions and contracted speech services. For our preschool grant, we currently support one early childhood special education teacher and a percentage of one ECSE paraeducator. All other activities, supports, and services are funded through local and state monies. Our proportionate share calculation, as I mentioned, is our regulatory obligation to students with disabilities that are, that are parentally placed in private entities within our locality. For this coming school year, we have set aside $37,160.75 to meet the needs of those students. In summary, the annual plan has been prepared in accordance with the Virginia Department of Education guidelines. We welcome your input and questions over the next month. And the final application is due to the state on May 18, 2018. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Richardson? Ms. Shelley?
Thank you, Ms. Richardson.
Thank you.
Nice job. Just wondering why we are going with level funding since our enrollment continues to increase?
Sure. You may recall last year that we worked with our CAC and we did have a recommendation to sort of increase our application amount in accordance with our increase in students, which was about like 2.37 or 2.32%. That request was denied and we were asked to present an application with level funding and then let the state work out what their formula is for the increase that we've seen in our December 1 count. So we are up from about 28.81 in 2016 to 30.35 in 2017. So that's an increase of about 154 students. So we can expect a slight increase.
Thank you.
Ms. Blaine?
Could you give us just a sense of, our funding comes from local sources as well as the federal government? And could you give us a sense of what the federal government has committed in terms of percentages of our expenses and what they actually reimburse us for?
Sure. At the inception of the law back in 1974, they said that they were gonna fund special education to 40%. And as you can tell, we're sitting at about 11% funding from the federal government. If you look at page nine of your plan document, that's our maintenance of effort page, you will see that through local monies, we are projected to support special education across Spotsylvania County Public Schools at about $30 million. The combination of local plus state revenue that supports special education is about 40.4 million dollars. So the federal funding is a very small percentage. You're welcome.
Any... Ms. Richardson? Thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to 13.03, the Local Plan for Career and Technical Education. Mr. Wolf?
I'm looking. Ms. Daniels, if you could come here for a second? How's everybody this evening? Hi there. I'm looking for my plan. You will see in front of you, all of you should have been given a copy of the plan for this evening. And as we wait to get the plan, to go ahead and come up just a short presentation, what you will see is that for those of you who have been through this before, this is very similar information that has been here every year. Ms. Phelps, this is an annual plan that we are required to go ahead and do from the federal government that's passed out from the Virginia Department of Education. So just to go through it just a little bit, this is required by VDOE to comply with the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act. And the plan covers performances for the years of 2016 as well as funding projections for 18 and 19. Okay, now we can go through there a little bit better. So, and I do apologize, I typically have with me my partners in crime, liaisons. I have Ms. Sue Venable Shelton and Tim McClid, and who unfortunately had other family issues that they could not be here this evening. So again, just to reiterate, this is required by the Virginia Department of Education to comply with Carl D. Perkins Act. And the plan covers performance for the years of 2016, 17, as well as what we're looking for, funding projections for 18, 19. So as you can tell from the slide there, you can see that the Carl D. Perkins has assurances, conditions, and assessments, which are the first five categories of the pages inside of the packet that I gave you. And then our performance assessment about how our students have done, and academic attainment, you can see in the categories of reading and math and technical skills and secondary school completion, and how Spotsylvania County Public Schools has performed in relation to the benchmark that has been set. Our student graduation rates, our secondary placement, our non-traditional participants, and our non-traditional completers are the other categories that you see here. So, and I will draw your attention is that our graduation rate is 98.26 and the benchmark is 93. But I will draw your attention down to non-traditional participants. This is a fluctuating number from year to year. And one thing that I would like you to go ahead and know is that this year alone, we had 145 different changes in how they calculate a non-traditional student. And just to sort of define that, a non-traditional student is, like for example, a male student taking cosmetology and a female student taking welding. So, and there have been 145 changes since last year to the overall 487 potential courses a student can take in CTE. So we just ended up having a visit from the state. We had our audit that I hope to share with you results later. So, and we had made mention to them is that it seems to be a moving target. One year we can hit the target and next year it seems as though we can't. So currently, we have in our high school courses, 24.6% female non-traditional students and 50.1% male non-traditional students. So at this time, we're hoping to go ahead and continue on our upward projection, but we would love to see more females in some of the courses that are typically not construed as something that would be for them, but we're certainly seeing that it is for them. So what's in the plan? You'll see that we have stakeholder participation is one of the schedules as well as the application for local career clusters. And for the application, these applications relate to new and updated courses within CTE. For the coming year, we have submitted and obtained approval from the Virginia Department of Education to offer new courses in the area of cybersecurity. As we look to the future, preparing our students for the workforce, we have already been approved for sequential courses in this field through the year 2022. Additionally, we will be instituting Veterinary Science 1 and 2 at the Career and Tech Center beginning in 2019-20 and hope to run a working veterinary science program. Currently, we have Vet 1 in all of our comprehensive high schools. We would slide that over to the Career and Tech Center and offer a Vet Science 2 where students can impact and interact with the community to go ahead and service small animals. What you also see on the next page are program offerings and services. And basically, the description of those pages are services for our special populations, academic for technical skill pages, technology and career technical education, professional development opportunities, evaluation of CTE programs, post-secondary links and counseling services, and how these impact our students. Offerings and services, we also have improvement and expansion and modernization. Just so you are aware, and I've said this to the Board before, we have communicated to our CTE teachers throughout the division when I took this position five years ago, that we work on three basic principles. What is the safety of your classroom? What is the need of your classroom? And then what is the want of your classroom? So, and we have done a, what I like to think, a pretty good job in making sure that our students have the opportunity and the exposure to the many types of machinery and technology that they use out in the business world so they're adequately prepared as they go in. So using the data to improve our program, we look at labor market needs. And with cybersecurity fundamentals at all of our high schools, believe it or not, the non-traditional gender for this course is female. So we're hoping that we can get a bunch of female students in the cybersecurity course. And preliminarily, we were hearing that, we were hoping that one cybersecurity fundamental course would be instituted at each school. And one of the schools is already pushing for three. So we're really excited about that opportunity. I've mentioned about Vet Science 2. And also, we have a pilot coding course that takes place at Ny River Middle School and Thornburg Middle School to try and bring those students onboard as well. The last slide of this presentation is essentially the funding that we were given for this year. They have not released the funding as of yet of what our proposal would be for next year. This is basically in a similar situation of where we were last year. The federal government had not released what our Perkins funds would be. So that's why what you have, the copy before you, is a draft proposal and we hope to have that. So when I come back to you again in April, that I should have that figure. So, and then I'm willing to take any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Wolf? Ms. Shelley?
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. First, when you mentioned the vet science and then they could get into the community, it just made me think of the profile of a Virginia graduate. So that is, they're gonna be able to do some work in the field.
We're hoping for a workforce initiative to go ahead and have our students not just work at the Career and Tech Center where this program will be, but will go out and gain the exposure inside of the actual industry.
I think that's awesome. And then also, that amount of money, the 200, just under 208, that amount of money, not even close.
For the equipment?
For anything.
Well, yes, it, well, we're happy to get anything that we get. Well, yes, it, well, we're happy to get anything that we get, but essentially, if a, an alignment machines goes down in automotive, that's a $25,000-plus piece of equipment. So it can go rather quickly. So, yeah.
And then how are we getting, are we advertising for cybersecurity teachers? How is that?
Right now, the state, for the first program for cybersecurity fundamentals, basically anybody within the CTE curriculum can teach it across the spectrum, but we're going to be working with our business teachers. So it's the second year where that program becomes more geared towards those business teachers. So we're hoping to bring that program also over to the Career and Tech Center, and also towards the end in working with the state and just having a conversation with them, offering a dual enrollment credit that will gear right towards Germana. And the local plan that we just had to develop, the pathway that went with that, I just submitted, has a program that takes you all the way through a cybersecurity program at the University of Mary Washington.
Perfect. Thank you.
Ms. Phelps?
Hey, Keith. What is the, you said Vet Sciences?
Mm-hmm.
One?
And two.
Two.
Yes.
They're currently in the high schools?
Vet Science One is in the high school.
Okay.
Vet Science Two is not. So we have a lot of students who will take small animal care in Vet Science One to go ahead and get a completer sequence. We wanted to offer Vet Science Two to give that track that is more in the industry. The difference between Vet Science One and Two is essentially Vet Science One is exposure, Vet Science Two is more the practicality and the application of what you're learning. So there's actually, there's a grooming part that's in Vet Science Two that is not in Vet Science One. And when that's the industry standards of when those students go out and interact inside of either a veterinary clinic or even down at, you know, PetSmart, that they're going to be working with grooming dogs. So, and being able to treat them for various, could be ticks and fleas and so on and so forth, that's going to be inside of more of your Vet Science Two program.
So what is the schedules for the students when they go to the CTC? Is it, are they more class, they're not classroom, they're more classroom geared at the Vet Science One?
It's going to be a-
And Vet Science Two? Do they go part-time? Is it?
No, Vet Science One, the way that the program is going to be scheduled, and again, this will be implemented not next year, but 1920. So in that program, the first semester is Vet Science One, the second semester is Vet Science Two. So they can pick up an entire credential in one year being over at Career and Tech on the same schedule.
I was just thinking about classroom space and what their scheduling.
Right now, we've been looking at classroom space as well as cages and grooming tables and everything that we can to go ahead and get that course up and going.
Thank you.
It's a great question, yeah.
Mr. Blain?
This may be a completely unfair question, but you have-
If you're going to ask.
So many activities. If you were asked, as I'm going to, what are your first or second biggest needs right today? If we could give you what you needed, what would it be?
Oh, well, that's, that's-
Yeah.
That's a good question, Mr. Blain. I would say anything that we could get honestly to support our students in the industry and what they're going to interact with. And I think that we've done a pretty good job. We're taking a real hard look at what programs we have, where the industry is heading, and where we should be moving our students towards. I think that a lot of times, we're taking a look at programs that we've kept in place for a while, and it's not really where the industry is headed any longer. So our need would be how to outfit those classrooms and get those students there. But the other greater need is that non-traditional. It's, I wish that that was more of a set target. I'm glad that it's, well, it's double-edged sword. I'm glad that it's not. So any way that we can get our non-traditional students involved in those courses would be fantastic. And plus the partnerships with the community. And we just went to a conference here last week up in Northern Virginia, which was a workforce symposium that was attended by Arnie Duncan, who used to be the Secretary of Education. Thank you, Don. So, plus we had a number of individuals and the state superintendent, acting state superintendent, to go ahead and give us some information about how we could work more with our community.
Well, this is such an important area, frankly, and this is where our growth goes. And if, the statistics that I've seen says that about 22 percent of all jobs require college and the others don't, and that's where we're working, the others.
Well, at a minimum, we should be preparing our students for a career.
Yeah.
So, and that's our intention and our goal.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Wolf? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Uppaco, Mr. Lynn, and Mr. Hockaday, would you join us for 13.04, School Safety and Security Update?
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. You're like the Wizard of Oz behind the curtain. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Morton. Tonight, John Lynn, our Director of Safety, Sean Hockaday, Director of Maintenance, and I will jointly provide a Safety and Security update. The presentation will address the comprehensive safety efforts initiated in prior years. It'll address those that are currently ongoing and describe those that are planned for the near future as well. As you know, all of our division initiatives in the county and our school system revolve around the foundation, which is our strategic plan. Our safety and security efforts, when we go to the strategic plan, are under organizational climate and school safety, which is goal number three, and specifically objective 3.1, which is to maximize safety and security by continuously evaluating and refining plans and practices. And that's exactly what we do. I'd like to point out at this time, some critical partnerships that we maintain. And I'm going to start, this is one of those bubble things, and if you get a master's or a doctorate degree, you get to make bubbles and make a lot of money doing this. So I haven't quite figured out how to make the money yet, but I can tell you that it's a good visual, and it's very important because when you look at the Instruction Department, you might say, what does safety and security have to do with instruction? Well, it has a lot to do with instruction. The whole child concept, which involves social workers and counselors to assist those with emotional and psychological issues, we've heard a little talk about bullying and things of that nature earlier. It's important that we have these resources for our students. Not to mention that the Department of Instructional Technology and the School Safety Department are organizationally within the Department of Instruction. When you look at the Transportation Department, and very shortly, you're going to have an action item agenda seeking approval of a new GPS contract that will improve bus safety as well as augment current bus camera programs. So safety is not only in the school building, but it also is in our buses as well. Internal and external partnerships, these are coordinating efforts with fire and rescue, the Office of Emergency Management, for example, we combine on drills with natural disasters and the Lake Anna exercises with the Red Cross when we have an emergency shelter situation, with the Rappahannock Area Community Services Board, the Virginia Department of Health, County Utilities, for example, they test our well water in some of our schools. They're our vendor for that. And SEDEXO, who you saw earlier tonight giving out money, unfortunately, they didn't spell Uppaco right, but that's okay. But the point is, all of these partnerships are important because they all have to do with safety and security of our students. And these are not all of them, but they're important ones. Our school and building personnel, implementing the Raptor system and making sure that that's adhered to, the school safety audits, the crisis management plans, the daily code of conduct compliance that's so necessary to maintain discipline and order, and having reps on the school safety committee that can contribute and give input. Our operations and maintenance department, they're responsible for the school entrance and architectural access control, the keyless entry program, emergency generator upkeep, fire, burglar alarm maintenance, things that you might not think about on a day-to-day basis. The security of buildings and grounds include fencing and other structural enhancements to provide safe and secure environments for our students and staff. The Sheriff's Department, and we were glad to see Sheriff Harris earlier tonight, an obvious and critical partnership in place, whether or not there's an immediate emergency or not, we have a relationship, and it benefits us greatly, and it benefits them as well. We work together. Now, this is a busy slide, but these are our 17 elementary schools. All the partnerships I just mentioned include each one of these buildings. Each school facility has unique aspects that must be addressed within the safety and security frameworks that are adopted by the division. These include the age of the school, architectural footprint, the developmental stage of students that are attending, and the communities in which they're located. These are our secondary schools and our cultural center. Each school facility here and on the preceding page represents over 4 million square feet, believe it or not, and approximately 1,400 acres of property. At this time, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Lynn.
Before I go over this particular slide, I want to give you some comment about my background and perhaps credibility for the job as Director of School Safety for our division. This is my second career as a public school educator. My first career was spent as a United States Marine Infantry Officer for 25 years. So I think that brings with me a certain experience level and understanding of security matters, crisis and emergency planning. And I attempt in my daily job to incorporate my experiences and my prior knowledge into the unique challenges of school safety and security. But looking at this slide, this slide represents an emergency and crisis management process or framework. It was originally developed by FEMA and is utilized at the national level in the National Incident Management System, NIMS. The state's safety, school safety agencies also use this framework, as does Spotsylvania County Schools. So it's a good, it's a good framework which gives us a common language at the national, state, and local level. But just to go over the four phases there, the first phase called prevention and mitigation are the actions that we take to decrease the likelihood that an event will occur or to reduce the loss of life or damage. Some examples of prevention and mitigation are our building access procedures to restrict access or control access to our buildings, and also our threat assessment procedures. The next phase called preparedness are those actions that we take to be ready to respond to a school emergency. And that would come from our crisis management plan. And a good example of this are the emergency drills and the training exercises that we undergo to make sure that we're ready. The third phase, the response phase, is where we actually implement our policies and procedures contained in our crisis management plan and use the three general responses, which are evacuation, lockdown, and shelter in place to respond to a variety of all hazard incidents or emergencies. And finally, the recovery phase, which is when we try to recover from the emergency or the crisis and as quickly as possible move back to full operations by repairing any physical or structural damages, restoring the academic environment, and treating any psychological or emotional damage that may have been done. But I do want to emphasize, this is a continual process, and we try to continually assess, review, and improve where necessary where we are in this step. I'd like to go over the, what we've called the Framework in Action, the Safety Continuum. These are actions or procedures that we have that are ongoing. In a moment, we're going to discuss about things that were instituted at a specific time and place, but these are things that are ongoing. Of course, the first one, the emergency drills, is something that is ongoing, continual, to respond to our preparedness for those emergencies or crises that I just mentioned within the four-step process. The annual school division level and school safety audit assessment is something that's required by law, and as you can see, it's very comprehensive, has five elements to that, and that is something that is an annual review and assessment of our documents that support our efforts to review and assess our safety and security in the division and at each individual school. The School Safety Committee meets monthly to facilitate this process and also go over other details that are associated with school safety and security. The Code of Student Conduct Committee meets annually, and that's another piece, as Mr. Uppaco has mentioned. And I believe Mr. Hockaday has a couple of comments he wants to make about some other ongoing efforts.
Good evening. Before I cover a couple of points, I just want to make a comment. I'm the facilities guy. I'm not, I don't have a background in security, but I am fortunate to be able to work with people like John and Don both. And they share their knowledge and experience. And together with the nuts and bolts of the buildings, we hope to continue to provide a better education and an environment. Somebody made a comment to me earlier today, and I realized that out of my 45 years, all but about seven have revolved around Spotsylvania County Schools, from being a student all the way through all of my education, including vocational center, being adult, going back to being, for adult classes at night, and then my 24 years service here. And now I'm fortunate enough that my wife and I have three beautiful children, and we have one at every level at elementary, middle, and high school. So I'm fortunate, and I think I'm very fortunate that I're in Spotsylvania County Schools. To get back to the presentation, we have several routine inspections and partnerships that we inspect our building and facilities. We have, we work with our emergency response. We have fire inspections twice a year. We also have scheduled inspections with our vendors to schedule inspections on things like our intercom systems, emergency call systems, fire alarms, burglar alarms, and those sorts of things. So they are things that are continual action items that happen yearly, and sometimes they happen more than once a year.
Now, we'd like to point out some of the actions that have been taken going back in history, back to the 2012, 13, 14 timeframe, to highlight some of the actions that were taken. And of course, this, the opening event here is the Joint Task Force that was established by the county and the schools and the sheriff's office as a result of the Sandy Hook incident at the end of 2012. But during the next couple of years, some high points where we had a major revision to our visitor management procedures, and if you have visited our schools and you know what you have to do to identify yourself, visitors have to identify themselves, provide a photo ID through the use of the Raptor system. So that was a huge step forward in controlling and properly managing our visitors to our building. The, we started our purchasing of additional security cameras, so this has been an ongoing thing, but we have either through grant funds or our own funds tried to augment school security cameras each year. In 2013, the Security Camera Company offered a major upgrade to their software, which we purchased, and it did enhance our ability to use our school cameras. And then in 2013- And then in two thousand fourteen, the state came out with a major revision to threat assessment procedures, which we follow their guide and their model when we updated our threat assessment procedures.
During this same timeframe, and some of these were part of what came about after the task force, we started architectural and structural enhancements of mainly the front entrance building access control. This was not only a, it's not only things that are seen, there's some parts of it that are unseen. We, as you know, if anybody's been in the schools, they went through, that's the years we started directing people directly into the front office if possible. We also did coatings and treatments of windows and other items as part of that. Again, that was the beginning, and it's still pieces of this that are ongoing. We also started at that same time period, thirteen, fourteen, installing push-button locks at schools, especially for doors that had special use. This did away with the key. It was, provided some security during times when teachers needed to get in and out of the building, or maybe it was a teacher and a pair combination, one could get in and out without actually having the actual physical key with them. But it gave us the ability to make some changes to the locks if needed in a quickly manner. We also, during this year, part of something that came from the task force was, we added a, started adding additional fencing to several sites. You'll see later on that that's something that continues. As we, as John has the task force and the safety meetings, where needed, we continue to add, and especially at the elementary level.
Moving forward, we have applied for the state security equipment grants each year, and as you can see, we have been awarded grants for things like radios, door locks, emergency radios, and not only exterior door locks, but also classroom door locks. We've also followed the advice of the Sheriff's Department and numbered our exterior doors to facilitate the identification of entry points for first responders. And in two thousand fifteen, following the model of the state School Safety Agency, completely revised our crisis management plan and updated that, again, using the state model. And then a year later, we arranged with a firm called BCWH to do an overall security equipment and security initiative at our schools, and they did a very comprehensive look at each of our schools and provided valuable input for the school safety committee and the superintendent to consider in prioritizing our efforts towards improvement.
Further facility changes during fourteen and fifteen, and they were outcomes of the task force and the work that BCWH did at the time. We added and installed security gates at several schools within the hallways. We continued with additional fencing, and we also continued the architectural and structural enhancements to the visitor access control. During two thousand sixteen, we also changed and went to a different key system for the keying of all of our buildings. That was the year it was implemented. It was, gave us the ability to use a key that could not be replicated as easy as the traditional style key.
And then more currently, we've continued our application for the state security equipment grant awards in two thousand sixteen in response to a change in state law. The number of lockdown drills were doubled from two to four. We did another major revision to our threat assessment policies based on the state model. We got some additional input from BCWH on an addendum they submitted to us for electronic security and safety systems, which has been very valuable as we move forward. I've already mentioned the comprehensive division safety audit assessment conducted in two thousand seventeen, and that will continue on into the future. A couple more things that I'll highlight is, the comprehensive review of the school crisis management plan was begun last year in two thousand seventeen, and we're in the process of implementing that now, and that focuses primarily on some revisions to some of our responses. If you remember that four-step cycle that I showed you, one of the three, one of the three, four steps being response, we took a hard look at that and made some revisions to that. And the last thing that I'll note is, our overall school division security cameras have been showing their age for quite some time. So, we started last year to look at a comprehensive one-hundred percent replacement plan because it had just reached the point where trying to replace or repair one at a time was becoming inefficient and costly. So, we are in the middle of a, of looking at bids that we have received and evaluating that process, so that will be ongoing for the next few months. But it's a pretty ambitious project, but it is time to implement that.
We continued in two thousand sixteen through eighteen with the architectural improvements. That is something that's ongoing. We also continued with adding more fencing, and John's been able to work and get grants to do so, help us with that. In two thousand seventeen, we made an investment in tooling and equipment for the new key system, so we could expand that and use that at all sites and facilities. You'll see in, as Don continues, in ongoing aspects of this. Again, this is only parts and highlights of some of the things we've done at the facility level to help it secure the buildings. We're still working with our safety partners and with BCWH, and as we get further information and we're able to achieve financially funding in place and achieve further work, we continue to do so.
As you can see, we have a comprehensive plan, but as you can see, you can't rest on your laurels because things change every day, as we have experienced unfortunately in the last few weeks. So, for the future, here are some considerations. We will continue with the Safety and Security Task Force with the sheriff and the county entities that we mentioned before under Critical Partners, with the potential to increase SROs and SSOs, which are our school security officers as well. It is our desire and our goal to complete final architectural entrance access controls at all schools that require substantial facility modifications. We've only got a few left that have not been ultimately modified the way that we would like to ultimately do that. We will continue with school safety audits. Technology enhancements will include keyless entry, electronic access controls at all schools, and ultimately, you'll be able to take your ID, your badge, swipe it through the key, and be able to then be, the principal will know who is in the building and when they leave and when they arrive. The current proposed budget requests student supports, and we kind of mentioned that before, so that our students are emotionally strong, and additional personnel to support mental health needs as they arise. Division-wide mentoring program, the ASPIRE program, which is kind of a bright spot. I know last week, we had, I think it was the first meeting of that group, that's a mentoring group with folks in the business community, and our first meeting exceeded, I think, our expectations, so we look forward to having that resource in the future. We obtain student and stakeholder advisory feedback. We have a parent advisory, we have a teacher advisory, and we even have a student advisory, the STAN group, all of whom we listen to and we seek their feedback. The implementation of division-wide emergency notification system was something that we're pursuing. Additional security fencing, I know you've heard about fencing, but we're not done yet. We've got a ways to go. It's been installed at elementary schools, we'd like to see it installed at all elementary schools. The BCWH Architects School Safety Improvements Initiative will be, again, formulated, again, it's kind of been on respite as we've been working on the recommendations that they made. We will be calling that group back together again. The contract award for comprehensive school security camera upgrades and replacement, you will, in May, at the May meeting, have an opportunity to approve that new contract. The RFP is ongoing now. The voice-over internet, we hope to install at every division site. What does that do? Well, that enables there to be communication while somebody is outside. The office staff will be able to see them, to be able to talk with them, and that person outside can actually show their ID from outside without coming in, which I know was a concern earlier this evening. We'll expand the badging and lock system and enhance materials and finishes. What does that mean? That means that in many cases, our glass areas are covered with Mylar, which is a substance that keeps bullets, and I hate to say it so graphically, keeps them from going through the glass. Does it shatter? Yes, but does it keep the bullet out? Yes, it does. People don't know that we have that, but we do, and we will continue to install that as we go. That is about it for the formal presentation, I will say. I'm an old guy. I've been a high school principal, middle school principal, alternative ed director, and a bunch of other things. Some of them I won't tell you because they weren't complimentary, but it's been thirty-six years in the field of education, and I can honestly say that safety is definitely now at the paramount. And it's a shame in a way, but we are not sitting down. We're working together. We're working with our partners in the community. We're working to make sure that our kids have mental health aspects, if they need help, that they can get that. We're making sure that in a quick response situation, we have the assistance of the Sheriff's Department and of emergency management. So, always be diligent, I hate to say it, never be satisfied, because we have to stay ahead at all times, and that's what we are intending to do. Thank you.
Do we have more questions for this team? Mr. Braswell?
Mr. Upaco, I want to thank you, and Mr. Lynn, Mr. Hockaday, thank you for your report, very comprehensive and detailed. I want to, I believe it was the second slide where you highlighted Critical Partnerships on that, and I don't know if it can be pulled back up.
Sure.
Yes, yeah, Critical Partnerships. I appreciate that. We can see that the school system cannot operate in a vacuum. I want to commend the Sheriff's Department and our school division, Dr. Baker and your staff. I had an opportunity before school began this year to go out to Riverview Elementary and do a tour with the principal, Ms. Darnella Cunningham. And we went by each one of the rooms, and they were going through a process of active shooter drills and how to secure their classroom in such a way to protect their children. And each classroom was unique, and so each teacher tailored their prevention plan with a SRO that gave them some feedback on how to improve it or to validate that their plan was a good plan. And all the teachers were really engaged, they were excited to have the opportunity to do that, and they were excited about sharing their feedback with their principal and, since I happened to be there with me. And so, I want to thank Principal Cunningham and the Sheriff's Department specifically for being ahead of the issue in that they understood that prevention is the one area that we can control, and they were actively engaged in preparing our children to be in a safe environment. However, like was mentioned by the gentle lady that spoke first on school safety, she had a blue top, I didn't get her name, very eloquently put about our need to be vigilant in listening to our stakeholders as to other things that we can do to ensure that we provide a safe environment for our students. And the idea that she brought up about the metal detectors is probably something that we might need to consider having on our CIP that I didn't see on the, you know, other improvements that we made. But I'm glad that we have citizens that are willing to come out and share good ideas so that we have an opportunity to make our school system as safe as we possibly can make it, because I, for one, know the sting personally of losing a child to a senseless act of violence. And I wouldn't want any other parent to feel the pain that I feel every day because of it. So, I applaud all the parents that came out and spoke. I want to let you know that, at least from this board member's perspective, we're always concerned about your children. And we're working in the best way possible, but it requires partnership. And I also want to allude to the fact that, you know, there are external groups that the school division relies on to help us in this process. We heard Mr. Phelps talk a little bit about bullying, and there is a need for mentorship, and there is a need for education to the community as to senseless acts of violence and the impact it has on families individually and collectively. And I'm honored that, through the loss of my son, that Spotsylvania County Schools have partnered with us to hold an event each year at Cortland High School where we bring awareness to the cause of teen violence and the impact that it has on the families, not only those that are the ones that are being bullied, but the perpetrators of the bullying and the impact it has on them and all parties involved. So, I appreciated that slide, and I don't know if I'm really asking a question, I'm just kind of telling you I appreciate that slide and that folks had a chance to see it and to see that we can operate in a vacuum, and that school safety is everyone's responsibility. And we want to assure our public that we appreciate your comments, that they are taken all very seriously, and when it fits into the plan to improve our schools, you'll find that, at least from this board member's perspective, you'll always have someone that is interested and concerned and willing to do what's required to protect our students. And I say that not just in a hollow way, but I know I would never would want to have another parent experience my pain. With that being said, I yield my time, Madam Chair.
Dr. Baker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I noticed I was just reviewing on the CIP, we have a number of schools that we're taking a look at the entrances to do this next year. Will we be able to complete everything this next year? Will we be able to complete everything this next year? We still have some outliers that...
We, our original plan was to try to get all but one done this next year during, since we've, that time and since the latest incidents, we're looking at a way with that we can bridge that gap. We can at least do part of the entrance until we get the final entrance modification complete. The last thing we want to do is take away from any of the scope of the project, but at the same time, we can work towards getting to the end of the project and put some other phases in place over this next two years till we finish it. So to answer your question, over the next two years, we'll finish out the projects. Thank you.
Mr. Twig?
Excuse me. To Mr. Upperco, you and I have spoken on several occasions over the last week. Can you identify for the public's sake the timeline that we're going to get these entrances completed?
Well, I think Mr. Hockaday attempted to do that, and I can't give you a specific, other than a general timeline, because we're retooling, we're relooking at some of the original substantial entrances that we initially undertook. And what I mean by that, that sounds like a political answer. Here's the bottom line. In 2013, after the task force met with Sheriff Harris and with the former county administrator, we started with the elementary schools with the access control. And we felt that that, you know, was the most vulnerable population. They did not have SROs and whatnot. We hit the easy ones first. And what I mean by that, we hit the ones that required the least amount of substantial modification from an architectural standpoint. Every one of our schools has at least an interim security measure at the front entrance.
Understood.
However, there are some, there's only a few left, and I don't want to even tell you how many. I know that you know personally anyway, but I don't want to say it in public. There are a few that remain that required substantial, I would call flip-flopping, for lack of a better way of saying it, between the office and the front entrance rooms in the front of the school. Because it's preferred that you go in the front entrance and be kind of led in through a locked door into the office area. Some of our schools were not laid out like that.
Check.
And would, you know, cost a tremendous amount of money to fix, but we're committed to doing that. What we're looking at now, and the reason I got a little iffy on your question, is because now we're looking at maybe doing something a little different that wouldn't necessarily require such a drastic flip-flop. That's what is the hang-up. Because each one of your buildings that we're left with is a unique building. For example, it's not like Spotsylvania High School in Massaponix where we have a similar entrance. The ones that remain are unique, and they require more design changes. So we're looking at trying to make the design changes that are necessary, but maybe not do it to the substantial amount that we originally thought we needed to in the interest of expediting them.
Right. But for the sake of a better answer to my question, can we safely say that before next school year starts, much of that, those project types will be complete?
I think we'll be in the process. I don't think we'll be finished with all of them before the school year starts with the short summer that we have. However, that's our objective, is to get them done as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Mr. Lynn? I don't know if it's uncanny or opportunistic tonight, given the high rate of failures of execution of our quality code of conduct that were identified here tonight by numerous of our good citizens. And to me, that's a problem. But, and these parents certainly deserve answers, and can we start tonight? And will you speak to our public this evening to identify some present tense lapses in application of our code of conduct, as well as some opportunities we presently have so that we can start addressing some of those problems?
Well, Mr. Twig, I'm not going to address any lapses. I will reemphasize that we take bullying very seriously. It is addressed in detail in our code of student conduct and will continue to be.
Understood.
And we will reexamine our guidelines and requirements in the code of conduct to ensure that it properly supports our school and the implementation of our anti-bullying policies.
Thank you.
Mrs. Phelps?
First of all, I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Upperco, and Mr. Hockaday, and Mr. Lynn, for moving on Thornburg Middle Schools entrance last week and putting the buzzer on. I appreciate it. I appreciate how you guys took care of it. And as a parent and go into that school, it makes a big difference to have the buzzer system in there, at least something until the full security front entrances are finished. So it gives me a little bit of peace of mind, even though I did, I do know that since Sandy Hook, we've been working on it. So, you know, three years removed in one week, and I was in Thornburg. So that was really pressing for me, and I really appreciate that everybody came together and took care of it. And I'm grateful for it, and I know other parents are too. So did I hear you say all the school sites and facilities have the secure entrance? Or am I, is there just a couple? I think there's just, I'm just trying to be clear.
Not all of the facilities. All schools have a type of security management at the front entrance.
So that's like the buzzer, or is that just...
Yes, ma'am. And we're working, in the meantime, on some other measures, some ways to identify people from the office outside of the building, some ways to have, to be able to talk to people outside before you, so you're not only depending on a buzzer, but you have contact, you can see identification, other credentials before you even let them in that door. So those are some things that we're working on as we speak to get in place above the architectural changes in the camera system. So there's several different elements of it that we're working on at the same time that will go, that will end up at all facilities.
So with the recent events that happened recently, I feel it's important to act on a tangible security solution in our schools. Tangible meaning the school division to take the approach to be proactive in, you know, and I don't know if Mr. Lynn can address this, but something like an anonymous tip line. I know other school divisions have that. You know, see something, say something, even anonymously. And also with the clear backpack, something that is tangible for the parents in the community to see that Spotsylvania County Schools are proactive and not being reactive. And I'm not sitting up here saying we are reactive, but I'm just trying to, to be a part of the solution. You know, be it security guards, school security officers, excuse me, or, you know, the school resource officers, something tangible for the community to see that's happening. I mean, all the, and I know there are details behind the architect redoing the front entrances, but as a community member and a parent of children that are in the schools today, I personally get the instant gratification seeing something tangible being done. Whether it is, like Mr. Braswell said, looking at the metal detectors or the security wand, something to, to really be proactive in it instead of outlining years. Because, you know, not here, not our school is just not for me. So to follow up with that is the, you know, the mental health component with that is huge, and it comes with the bullying. And, you know, the student code of conduct, I sign it as a parent, my children sign it. I'm sure the community, parents, caregivers sign it, and the children sign it. But when it comes down to it, what's, what is being implemented? Is it the code of conduct, the way it's written, or the code of conduct, the way it's being chosen? And so maybe as a board, we might have to look at the code of conduct with the safety task force to come up with something. I don't know when the code of conduct is annually reviewed with the safety review committee and what have you, but I think it is imperative for our school system to take a stand against the bullying. I've seen it firsthand. I'm going through it firsthand as, with my family, and we do what we can as a family and a community. But I think as a school division, we can enhance it and work better, and I'm willing to go to any lengths to be a part of it and help. But, so I think that's all I wanted to share. I did want to bring up the Mental Health Awareness Month is in May, so I didn't know if the school board, you know, is, would be willing to look at that as far as awareness towards the root cause of a lot of bully, I feel, I believe. And so with that, I'm gonna stop. Thanks.
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Nice job. Really appreciate that you brought that to us and to the public so they can see what we're doing in Spotsylvania County. I know there's always more that we can, that can be done. Somebody mentioned airport security, and I was actually talking to my brother about that yesterday, that you don't see things happen at an airport. They have probably millions and millions of dollars to spend on security, to spend on safety. You've got guards everywhere, you've got metal detectors, but you've got also lines and lines and lines, if you've ever been in Dulles Airport, you know what I'm talking about, to get through the metal detectors, and they have quite a few of them. Not saying that's not gonna, that wouldn't work here, because I, I mean, it might, and it's another option. But we need to look at those, those are the things that we could maybe look at in the future, and we could put in maybe our CIPs, our CIP plans in the future. Will we need another bond referendum? But one of our supervisors just said the other, at a meeting just recently, they don't have any more bond authority for the county to be able to borrow any more money. So that's something else that we need to be looking at and maybe putting forth through the future versus what they already have, I guess, but they can borrow more. School resource officers, that is county. I think it's time for the public to go to our supervisors and say, we want more school resource officers. I think the school board would be happy with that. Say, you know, whatever, you know, we need, so we can have one, at least one in every school. It would be awesome to have two in each of our high schools because they are so large. But it's money. No, that's not school money, that's county money. So that's something else for safety. Mental health has been mentioned multiple times this evening. That was one of the things that I mentioned last year when we approved the budget, was I would like to see, and this is still something, I would love to see, a school psychologist in every single building. They're not just for testing, they're mental health providers. Social workers in every single building. More school counselors, two per building, that's not enough, or in our middle schools, two, in our elementary schools, one, that's not enough. So there's a lot of things that we could do to enhance our security. It takes money. And if someone could write us a blank check, say, you know, this is, this is for safety, that would be awesome. Maybe it's time to contact Congress and say, okay, Congress, you need to fit the bill for this. This is something that we need to bring to our congressman in Washington, DC, say, you need to fund, we need to fund schools, but we need to fund school safety. So there's multiple things that we need to do, and I know, I'm sorry, I'm getting on a soapbox. But I appreciate what you are doing, and I know you know that we can do more. So thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for continuing to explore our options and continuing to check and see what we're doing and how we can enhance everything that we're doing now. Thank you so much, and I just say Godspeed to all of our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all you're doing. It's nice to show the public that these have been long-term plans and they have to happen gradually as the CIP funding gets allocated for it. Can't do it all at one time sadly, because we don't get the CIP money all at one time. I would also like to point out that in the budget this year, we've started, hopefully that we've, that this board approved five, two, including more mental health positions that are filled, which is very important to us. And those are positions that we got added, and we hope that can stay in the budget when it's funded. As far as, I've read it on Facebook, and I've heard it tonight, no matter how many times we say it, I don't think people understand, we don't employ SROs and SSOs. They are not employees of the school system. So as much as we all would love to have them in every school, we cannot do that. They are employees of the Spotsylvania County Sheriff's Department. So we will stand behind all of you who attack us on Facebook for that and come here. And we will follow you down to the Board of Supervisors meeting and help Roger ask for 10 more to fully staff an SRO in every school. 10 years, or two years ago, he asked for the, a school security officer grant that the supervisors did not support. It's not an SRO, but at least they would have had a SSO. But that is county funding, and we can't do anything to do that except for make the phone calls and to support our sheriff when he does ask for it. As far as safety in general, we always can do more, and we're always looking to improve and, you know, constantly check the CIP, and we're adding new things, and we are speeding up timelines as much as we can get funding available. But I just want to point out that the successes of the parts that are working together don't get reported. And we have the luxury of knowing about those things when they do work. And many times since I have been sitting on this board, the process has worked. You know, the SRO communicated with the students, and they got involved, and we've had catastrophes avoided because the system is working, can always get better. But it's because of fantastic employees and the system that is in place that we've been able to avoid things. So we just need to keep staying ahead of the ball and keep our buildings safe and keep safety as our number one priority. Ms. Shelley has one more thing.
You reminded me. About a year and a half ago, we had an incident at Riverbend High School. I had a child at Riverbend High School at the time. And our crisis team, our, I know our school resource officer, everyone who was involved in that situation got it taken care of, fixed it, and thank, I'm gonna thank the Lord, that there was nothing that happened at Riverbend. And it could have been bad, but because of the work of our people... at Riverbend. And it could have been bad. But because of the work of our people, our school resource officer, the administration at Riverbend, and the whole community coming together to support that building, things were okay. So we've got good people here. So I just want to remind everybody of that as well.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
But Mr. Upperco, you have to stay so you can update us regarding future growth and facility planning.
I'm gonna wait for the wizard to come back. And just give me a couple of seconds, please. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Ms. Daniels is pulling up the presentation. I would just like to thank Mr. Upperco, Mr. Hackett, and Mr. Lynn also, as I know there's only a few of you up right now. But I just wanted to thank them for providing the presentation as well as your feedback. At this time, maybe we're taking a short recess. But yeah, I'll wait till everybody's back or else it...
Do you want to take a minute or... Okay.
I make a motion to take a recess? Oh, one, two, three. Oh, then. Trying to go to the bathroom here. Oh, I didn't realize Mr. Blain was going too.
I know we still have several items left, but we did want to provide the board with an update. And really, this presentation will begin and end with hopefully your understanding that we are engaged in exploring, particularly at Massaponics High School, a process for moving forward with providing some additional relief. That's the beginning and the end of the presentation. However, in between, we want to make sure that everyone has the same background in terms of the study that we've been doing, not only on that facility, but all of the others. And Mr. Upperco is going to provide that update so that everyone lends their support and are moving forward with the same set of information. Mr. Upperco.
Thank you. It's déjà vu all over again. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Morton. I would like to review where we've been of late, where we are now, and where we think that we hope to go. So let me go back to the 2014 school bond referendum. And as you recall, most of you were on the board then, but not all of you, but you were, I'm sure, actively involved in what was going on. At that time, we identified future projects to further the division's strategic plan objectives. These projects included the renovation of Cortland High School. And you may recall, I remember specifically the number because I got to ask a lot of questions back in those days. We had 11 pre-referendum public information sessions. One was held in each one of the jurisdictions that you represent, as well as several at the Hobart Building that were general sessions. And they were some brutal meetings at times, very blunt and honest discussions. And I think that was great because our projects were well-vetted by the public. And when the bond passed in 2014, that enabled our needed capital projects to be funded. And those projects include the ones that are in our current CIP, the 2019-2023 CIP. As you may recall, we then engaged Mosley Architects in a study called Planning the Plan. As it turned out, there were two segments of Planning the Plan. So I would like to review real quickly what the goals were of Planning the Plan 1. Mosley Architects was commissioned in 2015 to conduct Planning the Plan study with the following objectives: to develop comprehensive division-wide plan to accommodate and maximize current facility capacities or capabilities, as well as provide for future student growth. That plan included enrollment projections through the 2025 school year using county planning department data, birth rate data, and September 30th enrollment numbers. The study also updated the GIS database. And a school program capacity analysis for each school, identifying possible opportunities to reconfigure existing classroom spaces to maximize resources, was conducted. Every single principal met with Mosley Architects. And each building and their unique needs were examined. And what we found was that the way that we teach now, in many respects, is a little different than it used to be when the buildings were built. What that did, it enabled us to look at some, what we called, opportunities to restructure the existing building in certain cases to maximize enrollment in those buildings. We then evolved, sort of, I call it evolving, but we melded, I guess, into Planning the Plan Part II. That provided a feeder-school pattern analysis and areas that may merit further examination for elementary, middle, and high school boundaries, boundary changes in the future potentially. It noted that Cortland High School renovation would increase the capacity from what it used to be, which is 1265, to 1500 by the time it was completed in fall of 2019. And it identified several areas at Massaponics High School that could be reconfigured cost-effectively to increase student capacity there. It referenced programmatic considerations such as growing the IB program at Spotsylvania High School, which of course, since then, has come into fruition and is growing every year, and future specialty high school centers, for example, STEAM academies for science, technology, engineering, art, and math academies, expanding career and college pathways. It noted that new housing developments on the horizon in the county would impact the school division. And out-of-zone student attendance was referenced as well. I want to talk specifically now about Massaponics High School. The design capacity of Massaponics when it was built was 1,830 students. Over the years, five modulators were added for various reasons, which gave you about 125 additional students' capacity. When Mosley met with the administration at Massaponics and analyzed the way space was being used, they believed the capacity could increase to 1,984 students with minor renovations that wouldn't include adding modulators. The Massaponics High School students take classes at other school locations during parts of each school day. And if you look at a block-by-block enrollment, and I'm going to show you that, it's not going to come out very well because there's too much information, but I want to go over it anyway. And I know that you will have it electronically to kind of peruse later when you have an opportunity to do so. On the following two slides, let's take a look. You're just like, whoa, what is that? Basically, what this shows as of March the 6th, and that's why your number's a little different than another slide I'm going to show you in a minute. But as of March the 6th, 1,955 students arrive at Massaponics High School first thing in the morning. But you'll notice as you look at the blocks, that at no time are there more than 1,850 students in any particular block. Why? Well, the reason for that is because many of the students, when they first arrive at the school, attend programs, even though they're Massaponics students, they attend programs at other specialty schools. And that would include the Career and Technical Center. That would include the Junior ROTC program, which actually is bussed out to Spotsylvania High School. That includes the Commonwealth Governor's School. That includes the IB program. There are some students that are upperclassmen that arrive late, and they're allowed to do that because their schedule allows them to do that. Some of them have internships and other things in the morning that they're attending off-campus. And some upperclassmen leave school early to attend, like for example, DECA, Distributive Education Internships outside the community. So even though, if you go back, 1,955 students arrive on campus first thing in the morning, at no time do you have more than 1,850 students in the building, in a block, at any one time. I hope that makes sense. There is flux during the school day because many of the programs that they attend are not actually in the building itself. There are some short-term efforts to repurpose space at Massaponics that I'd like to review very quickly. First of all, the administration under Dr. Pizani's leadership has currently redesigned the school into what he would call grade houses. Ninth grade is in this section. Tenth grade is in this section. The seniors are in this section. The juniors are in this section. What that does, it improves student travel and reduces hallway congestion. Mosley recommended, and we will be following up with this in the summer, removing unused lockers from the hallway at choke points. That would facilitate student travel from one class to another. And there are certain intersections that if you go during the day, you'll see a pretty orderly school. But you will see that there are some T-intersections in the building that get crowded when students are going through. That would be alleviated by taking out the room that the lockers take up in the hallways. Also, per Mosley, they recommended reconfiguring some existing CTE spaces, some very large rooms that really are not used as efficiently as they could be because you don't need that larger room to do what they're doing in those labs. Also, computer labs that could create additional classroom spaces. Now, I know you can't see this slide very well, but this is the last page of our current CIP. And I'm going to show it to you because, and I'm going to have to talk you a little bit, and give you some numbers. And I apologize for that. I'd rather show it to you, but I know that you can't see it. So in 2017-2018, on October 1st, Massaponics had enrolled 2,027 students. And you might say, well, how come it was 1995 in March and it was 2,027 in October? It's because that's the way high schools operate. You typically lose some kids in the spring. You don't lose them, lose them, but your enrollment goes down typically in the spring. If you'll notice, and I know you can't see it, so I'm gonna read it to you, pardon me for doing that. Next year, it's projected that the population on October 1st in 2018-2019 will be 2,119 students. And the following year, 2,175 students, and so forth and so on, until we get five years down the road to 2022-2023, where we have 2,264 students. So even though there are steps that we're taking and will be taking to immediately deal with some capacity issues, the bottom line is that enrollment at Massaponics is still projected to increase. Where the new housing is going in the county, almost every single time affects Massaponics High School because of its location on 2 and 17. The projected enrollment increases will require that additional efforts be taken in the near future to examine and to relieve those capacity issues. I think I hit the wrong button. Yep. So, next meeting in April. A new school attendance area policy and a new student transfer regulation will be presented to you, the school board, for consideration. And we're not quite there yet, else we'd have brought it to you tonight. It's still being tweaked. But it will enable you to kind of have a lot of input into where we will go and several options that you might have to help alleviate in the future enrollment at Massaponics High School. In addition, the impact of specialty high school centers will be further reviewed as well. So, in summation, efforts have been made by the administration this year to improve student flow, I call it flow, you know, travel, based on Mosley's recommendations. Additional measures that were suggested by Mosley that could increase student capacity with minimal renovation costs will be undertaken. A block-by-block enrollment analysis does show you that programs at other schools pull students from Massaponics, and that does reduce the enrollment for subsequent blocks. But as you can see from the projected enrollment, you know, four or five years down the line, that's not going to be enough. We're going to have to look at some other options. And that is pretty much the conclusion of my program. I do want to say this. When you have the opportunity to devise some sort of redistricting plan, when you have the opportunity to look at boundaries, we want to make sure that you are introduced and follow, if you will, a process in doing that. Otherwise, it becomes sort of a Band-Aid that you throw on here and there, and really is not as effectively used as it could be. So I know we'll talk more about that in April. But it is important, I think, and I'm sure that you've already thought these already, but it's important from a mindset standpoint to know that this is kind of where we're going, where we're thinking that we will ask you to go.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Upperco, I want to thank you for your presentation. I think it's important that the public see that when we address the issue of attendance and future attendance, that we are going about it in a strategic fashion. So I want to thank you for that. And I look forward to the future reports as we discuss strategically how we will position our high schools to absorb the growth that is planned for Spotsylvania County. I've had the opportunity to share with a few of our colleagues on the Board of Supervisors. And Dr. Baker and I have engaged in conversation with this as well. And something that I'm going to mention is, you know, more for public consumption. It's not really a question, it's a comment. But we would love to see a situation where we would allow the program of instruction to dictate what school you went to as opposed to the zone primarily in which you lived. And part of the way to do that is not only a relook at the way we do high school, but to have in the mix a state-of-the-art Career and Technical Center that not only accommodates, in a regional perspective, the traditional career and tech classes, but looks into the future for cyber tech and biotech and a variety of other things that would be housed for those students that would need to be career-ready as opposed to college-ready. And I believe that the incentive to do it would provide an economic incentive for businesses to locate in this area, to take advantage of future employees that they have some input on how they're trained and what they're going to learn. So I think it would be an immense benefit if we would be able to plan another bond referendum so that we could build, instead of another high school, build a career and tech center that was cutting-edge. That being said, it has to be cheaper than purchasing a new high school because there would be no need for a new gymnasium and a new football field and an auditorium and the things that a traditional high school would have. But it would be positioned in such a way that we would be able to take full advantage of the future technologies and skills that are required by our students so that they would be able to fill the employees that are required in the future. So I would love to see at some point, and I've received some positive comments from some of our supervisors, one in particular, Mr. McLaughlin and Mr. Trampy, actually thought very highly of the idea. And I think that at some point...
And I think that at some point, you know, we would probably need to have a Duther Bond referendum, probably in 2019, where the public would be able to authorize us to allocate more money. And going back to the previous conversation that we have, there's obviously some things that we identified that would require additional money for CIP to bolster school safety. That would be presented in such a way that the public would have an opportunity to buy in, and other stakeholders would have an opportunity to buy in. So I didn't really have a question. I just was making a comment, and I appreciate your report, and Madam Chair, I yield my time.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Appico.
Thank you.
That brings us to item 14.01, approval of Sinovia Solutions GPS monitoring system for school buses. Mr. Forrest and Mr. Traer? Welcome.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. We come before you this evening with a request to move forward with the acquisition of a GPS platform for Spotsylvania County Public Schools bus fleet. One of our goals for this strategic plan is to have 100% of our buses equipped with GPS by fiscal year 2019. We have reviewed multiple applications and have piloted two systems over the past year, and we are making a recommendation this evening to lease a system through the service of Sinovia Solutions. There are multiple benefits for our operations and the division through equipping our bus fleet with GPS. First and foremost, in today's climate, it would provide another measure of safety and security for our students utilizing our bus transportation. GPS provides real-time data to assist with response to emergency situations, identifying bus location and status. Additionally, GPS will improve our route efficiency and assist with our efforts towards mileage reduction. The application will provide an automated time management system that should guide driver schedules and be reflected in payroll savings. School-level staff will benefit from accurate information, and the real-time data will improve communication with parents. Why Sinovia? Sinovia has been a leader in the GPS industry for years with over 950 customers with service to Fairfax County, Virginia Beach, and Newport News School Divisions, just to mention a few in the state of Virginia. The service agreement would include GPS track and trace, time and attendance, engine diagnostics, and navigation for drivers. And through the lease program, we will be afforded an ongoing warranty, service guarantees, and upgrades and support. The real-time and historical data has the capability to record multiple events, including timestamps along the route, activation of amber lights, stop-arm activation, speed throughout the route, excessive idle alert, and diagnostic messages for the mechanics, just to mention a few. The plan versus actual routing allows our routers to see the route as designed against the path that was actually taken. Sometimes our drivers identify a better path logistically that can help with route efficiency. And sometimes, not often, we may find that a driver is doing something that is not authorized. Through a tablet that would be mounted in the bus, the drivers and attendants can log in and out and identify the job type, regular route, field trip, athletics, et cetera. Actual time will be recorded and measured against the planned schedule. Time sheets can be downloaded electronically and imported into our payroll system in the future. Aside from the time and attendance, the tablets on the bus allows the driver to select the route that they are covering, and it is recorded for dispatch. Operationally, we can send text messages out to our drivers and attendants to remind them about meetings, training, bus service, et cetera. After selecting the route, drivers will be able to view turn-by-turn directions for the planned route. This is a huge benefit for a substitute driver that is not familiar with the planned route or area of travel. Through this lease service agreement with Sinovia, we would have a lifetime warranty with spare hardware. We will receive upgrades and enhancements, and Sinovia will provide installation of equipment and necessary training. There is no upfront cost. Verizon is a cellular provider, and the agreement includes all hardware, software, and services. Now, open the floor up to questions.
We need to make a motion first before we start discussing. I will make a motion to approve the Sinovia Solutions GPS monitoring system for school buses.
Motion made by Ms. Shelley to approve Sinovia Solutions, second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion? Ms. Phelps.
I have a quick question. So you said Verizon would be the, they would be the provider for the GPSs? Do they work out in the county? Like out, because Verizon, I, I know some of the service for Verizon out there in the county, Livingston and Berkeley, is kind of sporadic as it is, so.
Yes, ma'am. They are assuring 99% coverage.
And is this system expandable to accommodate the software updates, the updates like how, like because technology changes in software and, you know, is it expandable to add on more memory or? Did they give you an idea, you know, like my cellphone probably lasts about three years?
Yes, ma'am. Well, the program that we're going with is a lease program, opposed to a purchase program. And as we all know with technology today, as soon as you walk out the store with it, it's, it's antiquated. So I think with the lease program, absolutely, we'll be able to stay current with the technology through Sinovia.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Shelley?
Thank you, gentlemen. Here Comes The Bus was mentioned on there a couple of times. Is that an app? Because I know there are some apps for buses so that the parent can even see where they are. Is, do we have, will we have that capability?
That service is provided, yes, and that is no additional cost to the division or to the parents. That is a system that, in talking to other localities, they've had some complications in working through it. But certainly, it is part of the service that is being provided. I think that would be on the back phase of, of our implementation. We want to get the other, the time and attendance piece is very critical to us right now. We want to get that piece up in operation.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. But I, that way, all the other school divisions can get the kinks out of the app. That's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine?
I think you've answered my question, but I want to be sure. You're able to identify a bus, and you could tell where that bus is at at any particular time, so whether you're doing it in the central office here or the parent knows the, the identifier somehow and can follow the bus his or her child is on, is that correct?
We can certainly identify the bus at any point. The way the parent app works, it's within a radius of their residence. Once the bus enters that radius, then they can track it.
Adamare?
A quick question. What's the transition time, you know, for bringing this onboard? Are we looking at the fall?
Yes, sir. It's our intent that it would be an application with the new academic year. I believe once we sign onboard with Sinovia, sign the contract, implementation of the equipment would begin pretty much immediately.
And what's the training time? How long do they say it will take to do the training and?
Well, they want to get the systems, they're very interested in getting the systems onboard as quickly as possible so we can begin that training process, and the drivers can potentially start working with it during this academic year before we put it into full implementation. They are committed to providing whatever training we need and to make sure that our drivers are comfortable with the, the system.
In terms of, you mentioned the tablets. Is that something we provide, or is that something that's going to be provided through the lease arrangement?
That's part of the lease agreement.
And the mounting, how is that?
They will come and do all the installs for us. As we add buses in the future, I think our maintenance team can put the systems onboard. But we are looking at 370 units to begin this process, and Sinovia is committed to doing the installs for us.
I noticed the price on the cover sheet said 181,0329. What's the ongoing maintenance cost? Is that what we would anticipate each year, or is that a, a less, less figure? It's more at the beginning?
Since we are going with the lease program, that, that price will remain constant as long as we, we, we keep 370 units in play. So we are, we are writing the City of Virginia Beach's contract, and that is up for renewal in FY '20. We could experience a potential 5% increase is what my estimate is right now on that, so.
And I think my last question. Because we are going to be beginning a time and attendance component, would that start again in the fall, or would we transition into that already, and how would that tie into our MUNIS system?
Well, I will tell you that City of Newport News has Sinovia, and they have MUNIS, and they have successfully made the time and attendance piece work for, for their operations. We will initiate the time sheet process electronically with the new academic year. As far as aligning it with MUNIS, I believe that probably will not take place until we bring MUNIS online payroll-wise.
Spring of next year.
Spring of next year.
January, January, yeah, I should say.
Sounds good to me.
I, we're writing on Virginia Beach's lease, or RFP.
Yes, ma'am.
So how long is the lease for?
That does expire at the end of FY '19. However, there are other procurement avenues that, that we could go down. NJ, NJPA is one source cooperative agreement that we could ride for FY '20 if need be.
Okay. And the tracking app works within a radius of the location of the person using the app? So what? Is there anything to prevent persons who don't have children in the school system from downloading the app and seeing what buses are coming to them?
There are safeguards that are in place. I'm not sure that I can tell you exactly how that works, but.
But there are safeguards in place for that. Okay. Are there any further questions? Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
14.02, Ms. Blake, adoption of K-5 social studies textbooks.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This evening, in accordance with our local textbook adoption policy, IIAA, we have reviewed and selected elementary social studies textbooks. Five Ponds Press, our world social studies series, is dedicated to help educators meet increased rigor and high expectations of the new 2015 standards. They're Virginia, they are a Virginia-specific publishing company, and the text is aligned to every SOL bullet. The student edition comes with vocabulary support, grade level charts, tables, graphs, maps, primary and secondary sources, and engaging photographs and images. Included with it, included with this adoption are interactive whiteboard files, suggested literature lists, reproducibles, both objective and performance-based assessment, and rubrics, and each student will be, will be available both digitally with audio. At this time, it's administration's recommendation that the school board adopt and purchases the Five Ponds Press textbooks as recommended.
I will make the motion to adopt the K-12 social studies textbooks.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to adopt the textbooks.
I will second.
Second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? Ms. Shelley?
Um, did, I know the answer's, but just want to check. Did we have teachers that were part of the, the group to look over the textbooks?
Yes, ma'am. We had representatives from every school and every grade level, and they started with, I think, six textbooks, six companies, and then they narrowed it down to two. And then those two companies came to present, and then did more of a thorough deep dive into their materials, and Five, Five Ponds came out overwhelmingly as their choice.
That's great. And then it says, white, interactive whiteboard files, does it, so those would be, Smart Board would be able to use it? It wouldn't be like from another whiteboard?
They are either Smart or Promethean boards, but we do have Smart Boards here, or the digital projectors that works with the new software as well.
Good, thank you.
Any more questions? All those in favor of approving the textbooks? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Would you also share with us the approval of expansion of elementary gifted arts program information?
Absolutely. In accordance with our local plan for the education of the gifted, we endeavor to expand services to gifted students. This year, Spotswood and Wilderness Elementary Schools are participating in a pilot program for our gifted visual arts students. With the pilot, we're learning and finding ways to celebrate as well as focus on the areas of the program that we need to grow. With the board's approval, in the fall of 2018, we'd like to expand our pilot to two additional schools, Salem Elementary and Chancellor Elementary. The expansion of this pilot is cost-neutral at this point and will be supported through our existing budget. In the spring, we'll share updates with the board about our current pilot program, as well as other endeavors in the areas of gifted and talented education.
I would like to make a motion to approve the expansion of elementary gifted arts program.
I will second that.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to approve the elementary gifted education expansion, and second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
So it was at Wilderness, you said Wilderness and Spotswood?
Yes, ma'am.
And so is there any, do you have any data on that now?
We are gathering some data for you. We don't have it in a presentation tonight. I knew we were, we were under some time crunch this evening. We want to share that with the board. But the reason we're asking for the expansion now rather than after the data is we, we need to give the students time to create their materials before the end of this year. So if we were granted that expansion, we could start up in the fall. I could, I can share with you that it has been very successful. There are some different things that we would do with scheduling. We had one teacher that was with us for the inception of the program, left our school division, so we had to bring a new teacher onboard and up to speed. So we've had a few hiccups, but those are kind of things to be expected with a pilot program. So we hope to bring you some data either in April or May.
And so once that, the pilot program's over and the ongoing year, over-year costs will come out of the instruction budget?
Yes, ma'am. If we were to able, if we are able to expand and bring on more and more schools, there will be a cost associated with that, and that would be an instructional budget item. But these schools right now are able to work it in with their current schedule that they have.
Thank you.
Mr. Blaine?
I have a question. It may be a little more broad than you want to answer, but how do you go about selecting the children that we consider potentially gifted or gifted and move them into, in any given school?
And I appreciate that you asked that because along with our gifted local plan, there are parameters for selection. You have to come up with a selection process, and we had a group of both gifted and talented teachers and our art teachers sit together and really do a lot of focused planning around that. So part of what we did is we made sure that the whole group that got the same materials, and that is one of our small costs, is we make sure that those materials are provided, that we are not inadvertently sliding students that may not be able to afford materials to. to complete projects, to have, to bring to the table, to be looked at. And then we had other art teachers come in and help select the projects that were, um, that they felt were the highest of quality.
And at what grade level? You do mention elementary, but when are you beginning to identify potential kids from kindergarten already?
Actually, the, the program that is in place right now is third, fourth, and fifth graders. And we plan to work with second graders for this next screening in the spring, if we get to move forward.
Good. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Ms. Shelley.
I know I was asking about this a long time ago, so I'm, I'm happy to see it. What about, um, future? Are we still considering, in the future, gifted performing arts as well?
I also share your passion for that. And I would love to look at the performing arts side. I would love to bring some performing arts opportunities to the elementary as well, just to start moving that down. But I don't have any current plans, but I also agree with you. I would love to see that.
Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to fifteen point zero one, board member comments. Mr. Braswell?
Madam Chair, I won't be long because I'm sure my colleagues will cut my throat. I just want to commend the, uh, our chess tournament that we had on the third of March. And I want to thank Mr. Keith Wolf for his coordination of that effort. And I want to thank Mr. Scott Blakoe, who was the tournament director at Post Oak. We had a glorious time. I think there was a hundred and twenty-five, uh, young people competing from all different, uh, levels. And I want to thank, um, my colleague, Ms. Phelps, for helping me and with the awards presentations. We enjoyed ourselves. And I just want to just thank our, our division for putting on this event so that we could recognize kids for their analytical and strategic skills. Thank you.
Ms. Phelps?
Um, I just wanted to, I was just going to piggyback off of, um, Mr. Braswell. I just wanted to thank him for inviting me to the test tournament because it was really exciting to watch a different angle other than sports. And, and it was really neat. And I, I enjoyed myself. And, um, I, I did combine my day with the, um, the culture à la carte out at Spotsy High School, which I've been attending for the past, I guess, three years now. And, uh, it was just, it really was a great way to experience all the different talents. And, um, and I could have stayed there all day. And I also, um, I went to the all-district chorus event at Stafford High School and watched the Spotsy, uh, chorus that was here sing with other school divisions. And it was pretty neat because they were all like, I knew the songs. And you see Stafford and Spotsy, they're all in tune. They all know. And they just all met each other at eight o'clock that morning. So, it was pretty neat to watch the, uh, watch them all come together with different, um, school divisions. And, uh, and, um, so that's pretty, that's pretty much it. And I just want to thank everybody for staying here late too. I know. Alrighty. Have a good night.
Dr. Meyer?
Just a quickie. We have our Northeast Regional Meeting at Manassas Park High School, March twenty-first. Uh, I am going. I think Mr. Blaine is going. If anybody else wants to, Dawn is going. So, we can ride together if you wish, if anybody wants to go. Much appreciated. Thanks.
Ms. Shelley?
Um, I just wanted to announce, um, because it's just so cool. Riverbend High School's Key Club, and I asked somebody to write this for me, so I'm going to read it. Riverbend High School's Key Club is proud to announce that they are now chartered through Kiwanis of Fredericksburg. A celebratory ceremony was held on Wednesday, March seventh, in the auditorium. Students and advisors were presented with a beautiful banner to display and also received a membership, a membership pin. The Kiwanis of Fredericksburg President, Robert Dodd, and past President Key Club Liaison for Riverbend, Jennifer Mikowski, presented the official charter to the students and advisors. Several Kiwanis officers, the Key Club District Administrator and Lieutenant Governor of Key Club for District Two F and Key Club students from other schools were in attendance in support of Riverbend. I'm going to go off what I'm reading. There were students there from Spotsy High School, I mean, sorry, Stafford High School and JM High School because they have key clubs as well. The Key Club is a service club, and Riverbend students have done a number of service projects throughout the year and have plans for many more. Projects included, include coins for a cause to raise money for hurricane victims, playing games and bringing treats to residents of the Spring Arbor Retirement Home, volunteering at the food bank and cleaning up the school grounds and a path, and path to Harrison Crossing. They were started by, the Key Club was started by Junior Paul Van, who is also named webmaster for the entire Key Club Capital District. The club currently has already thirty-one members and is looking forward to growing next year. The advisors, the advisors are Kelsey Schultz and Michelle Gordon. And I just have to say that I was so impressed by the students. You, we all might remember, um, the student who started the club, Paul Van. He was the, he spoke at the Sage Banquet last year. He does cybersecurity. And he was recognized here at one of our board members as a sophomore in high school. And Mister Personality, very intelligent, very personable. It was, it, um, so he's who started the club. And it is an anomaly for a club to get chartered in one year. It just tried for its charter this school year, and it was already chartered. So, um, I just think we need to be very, I mean, I'm very impressed with the students at Riverbend that went ahead and got this going. So, I just wanted to mention that.
Any other board member comments? That brings us to item sixteen point oh one, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Brings us to sixteen point zero two, new business. Do we have any new business? Mr. Twig?
Request to revive my motion from three or so meetings ago, where, uh, I stated that I'd like for us to start taping all meetings where we put the gavel down. So, can we have discussion and vote?
A second?
Motion by Mr. Twig to record all meetings that gets called to order? Is that what you want to refer to? And a second by Ms. Phelps, discussion?
We're talking about regular school board meetings, which we're currently filming, right? We're referring to, uh, work sessions? If, which, works, okay, so. So.
I certainly am in favor of discussing this issue. But I think you should come prepared in detail and define what, what your meeting went, went all and that type of thing.
Well, last.
Go ahead. So, I would, I'd rather, rather have you do that and let us defer this. I think it's a valid thing to discuss, but, but we've got to define what a meeting is, when and where, et cetera.
All, all those questions came up the last time. And, uh, the thought across the table was that, yes, every time we meet, put the gavel down. If we have work sessions in the afternoon, afternoon where we don't put the gavel down, let's incorporate those as well. So, I'll edit the motion to add that to it. That said, uh, Dr. Meyer and Mr. Braswell both brought up the points of, well, let's get cost information and just, uh, think about it for a month. And so.
Well, did you give us the cost information?
Yes. The cost is zero. And, uh, the service that provides, uh, uh, that service is, uh, can manage without cost change, uh, the meetings that we have discussed.
And you think this is anytime? So, if we do a joint getaway planning session with the supervisors, you would want that to be recorded? Because there's been discussion that we were going to run out and do a two- or three-day planning session. But you would want that all videotaped? So, you want the cable people to travel with us and do all that stuff?
I'll let that up to the board to decide. But I'd say incorporate anytime we meet and put the gavel down. And, uh, also the, uh, the board sessions in the afternoons that are not presently being taped.
Kurt, I'm, I'm just going to repeat. I, I certainly would like to discuss this. And I think if you gave us a written statement, it would be a, a much better starting point so that we're sure we, I think you just mentioned there's no.
This isn't that hard.
I think, and you mentioned there's no cost or something. Well, this.
Well, Mr. Clerk, would you weigh in and shed some light on the subject, please? On my behalf, while I have the floor?
I guess, just, just to, I guess, provide some clarification to Mr. Twig. I think the only, I guess, the main thing that is being proposed that we tape the workshops. And I think that was the item of contention that you all had before. Because I think right now, and the work sessions are recorded. Of course, the regular board meetings are recorded. Anything that's done with the board of supervisors, of course, is court, is recorded at that particular location. The things to take in consideration would be any other type of meeting that you scheduled that would perhaps be off-site, then it would be a matter of whether you record that. It wouldn't have to be a video recording, but it could be an audio recording. I think what Mr. Twig is, is requesting more specifically.
Is all professional development to be recorded is what he's asking for?
Yes. And just breaking it up.
But he hasn't worded it like that.
Just, just clarifying that it's the work sessions that were already recorded. But the main thing that, um, is being submitted is the workshops. And that's what we typically do not, uh, record. And as Mr. Twig pointed out, um, there are no additional costs if we were to do that for the, um, for the workshops.
Okay. So, again, Mr. Blaine, that's not that hard. If somebody wants to, uh, help feed this motion to where it meets everybody's satisfaction, then let's go with it and vote on it.
Ms. Shelley, you may have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Twig, I'm just, the no cost, you mentioned it as well. If the media company is here, because I'm just thinking back to when the CBRC started recording their meetings, there was an additional cost to this, to the county budget, which would, to me, be the same type of thing. Because if they're going to be recording, now, we don't have as many meetings or workshops as they do. But yet, there was an additional cost. So, that's why I'm, I'm just wondering about if, if that has been looked at. And then also, um, for instance, when we have our legislative, um, reception, that is also considered a meeting. Would that be recorded? That, I'm, those are just my questions. Because those came up before. We didn't have an answer. So, I just want a little bit more clarification is what I'm asking for.
Braswell?
Well, if the legislative reception is recorded, the question is, is, you know, would those legislators that come, visit us from other divisions in this, in that particular session choose to want to be recorded? And would, uh, the general assemblymen and state senators, um, oblige themselves to that? We don't know the answer to that. That's, uh, that's, uh, to put them in that category, to say, we're going to record you when in the past we never have. Maybe they're not as frank and open about some things that they're toying around in their head. I don't know. But, uh, I, I think we need to define exactly what the motion is and what we're trying to do. Is it just the?
Right. I think he meant, his motion should have been, I want our professional development to be recorded. And stopped at that. Because when he, like you said, when he kept going, now we go into the legislative reception and all these other things that I don't think he meant to. But he has not changed his wording yet. So, as the motion stands right now, that is what is proposed.
Okay. Well, then, that puts me in a position to withdraw my original motion and go with the, uh, statement as you stated there. The, uh, tape, uh, present tense, uh, meetings and also professional development.
You want to video record, right? I mean, tape, that's kind of antiquated, right? So, is that what you're asking for? Video recording all professional development on behalf of the school board?
That works, yes. So, that becomes the motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
So, the clarification is not just audio, but video, to do both? Like, we're doing regular meetings?
That's what she said.
For the, for the workshop times? That's the motion. Understood.
We're going to vote on something that's going to be a rule. At least we ought to be able to write down the rule so we all understand what it is. Because every time a question has come up, well, maybe this, maybe not that. And again, Kurt, I'm, I'm genuine when I say we should have it clear. What is it, what is it we're going to do? Recording, video, when recording and that type of thing? And I'm, I'm prepared to vote on that, but I'd like to know what precisely I'm voting on.
Madam Chair, point of order. If the motion that's on the floor that's being entertained, uh, does not win, then when can it be brought up again?
Must have voted, to have a motion for reconsideration, you must have voted for it. And then you may bring it back up for a motion for reconsideration.
Okay. So, there's no time limit on, or, or there's no cycle other than that?
You have to have a two-thirds vote for reconsideration.
Two-thirds vote for reconsideration, okay. You have to vote yes for it. You can bring it back up. But in order for it to carry, two-thirds or five votes have to come.
It's not for it to be, it's not second. It's two-thirds vote have to agree for the consideration.
Oh, okay.
Can you read the motion back?
So, you're going to put me on the spot, huh? I think the, um, the motion is that all, um, board meetings, inclusive of board workshop meetings, be video recorded.
And video recording is not going to have any cost to it?
Correct.
No.
For now, but what if it does?
At, at the present time, the scope of the request, um, does not, will not include any additional cost.
There you go. Done.
You guys ready to vote? Should we roll call vote? Grab, no.
I will say yes.
Twig, yes.
Braswell, yes.
Phelps, yes.
Meyer, yes.
Shelley, no.
Motion carries five to two. Any other new business? We haven't adjourned yet, sir. Shelley, no. Any other new business? Is someone going to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?